This is a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Postponed from this evening's meeting is items, our items, number four, seven, and eight. Mr. Yesky and Victoria Goss will be seated this evening unless Mr. Levy shows up. Number one, Sandoro and Claudia Malagassi, 1031 North Street subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. This was before you back in May as a preliminary subdivision application. You granted preliminary approval at that time, subject to resolving a number of things. First was to obtain a variance of the width of the access way because we did not quite have 120 feet of frontage along North Street. That was granted also by the Board of Appeals in May. The Health Department has reviewed the septic system plan and has given their approval. And the Engineering Department reviewed the site plan and the drainage report. And just earlier today, found that we could resubmit the plans prior to the building permit approval rather than prior to subdivision approval. I was going to point out that we could have just given you a 20 by 40-foot box and said, "This is how we're going to have the drainage." But we actually have an idea as to how we want to develop this so that the footprint and the plans that we're submitting are pretty much what my client's looking to build there. And Mr. Ottenman, who's here this evening, has been working with the town engineer to address any of the other issues they have. And he did provide additional testing data, which was already done, to the Engineering Department today. I know there had been a comment from the zoning enforcement officer about the measurement of the square footage. And there were two things that I know are at issue. One is the second floor of the garage. We were showing it measured to the seven-foot knee wall rather than showing it measured to the actual two-and-a-half-foot knee wall. Even if you took the entire plate, which would be another 357 square feet, and added that to the total, you'd still be 400 square feet under what's permitted in the zone. And although I don't have grade plane analysis, I do have photographs of the house. And it's really just two or three steps up from grade to the first floor. So actually, the zoning enforcement office will accept photographs when it's so clear that there's no question as to being less than three feet from average grade to the first floor. So I believe that we've addressed that issue. There was a question on the open space parcel and how we were going to maintain that, whether it was going to be planted and whether it was going to be left as a meadow. We do have a restoration plan for the northerly portion, which was already covered by a building and impervious surface, which includes native species. The rest, we were going to plant interspersed with large trees but essentially handle as a meadow. So we will submit a maintenance plan for that as part of the final approval of the subdivision map.
And has Conservation seen your restoration plan?
No. Their question was, "Are you going to plant it out fully or are you going to have a meadow?"
So it would be good to...
We would submit that to them for their review as part of the signing of the record sheet. There was also the question of why there was a fence that was required by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Essentially, their discussion was, "If you're going to have it as open space, you should leave it as open space and not have it as part of your yard." And they wanted to make it clear that the open space was not going to be part of the rear lot. And therefore, they required a fence. That was their thinking on it.
What kind of fence? How high? Anything in that?
Probably a split rail fence, four to five feet high.
There's one other thing on the subdivision map. I think it's a pedestrian easement going up the east side from the front lot to the rear lot.
Right here.
It's just not identified as such on the map, on the subdivision map.
Ah, yes, that should be shown on this to show that both lots...
It is shown, I think, but it's just not identified.
Actually, unfortunately, it's at very faint print. It says five-foot access easement.
Five? Usually, we get 10. Maybe that's what I meant.
Actually, I think it is 10 in the regulation. We'll make sure that the 10 is provided and that it's clear that it's an easement, pedestrian easement to the open space.
You know, when you gray it out like that, it almost appears as if it's an existing condition.
We'll make sure that it is a permanent condition.
That's good. And you'll make a 10 too.
Why did the Zoning Board of Appeals require the fence?
There was a fair amount of discussion on whether...
Pedestrian easement from the front lot to the open space.
That the open space should remain as open space and not be incorporated into the rear lot as part of its yard. And since the area's all essentially open lawn now, they wanted some way to show that that was open space and distinct and separate from the yard of the rear lot.
And it doesn't go all the way around, right? It stops at some point?
It's the entire interior...
It's L-shaped, that.
...portion of the open space or the exterior portion of Lot 2R.
Okay, so somewhere aligned there is obviously going to be a gate or something so you can get a mower in there.
Yes, yes. We'll have to have a gate so that as part of the maintenance plan, we can do maintenance and mowing.
Right. And so as part of that, part of filing the Mylar and the declaration, I think that we'd need to meet with Alex and make sure that the number of times a year that this gets mowed and that kind of thing gets hashed out. You can do that through our office, but in coordination with Conservation.
We will submit a maintenance plan to you as part of submitting the record sheet.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is I think that maintenance plan should be part of the declaration of restrictions for the open space.
Oh, okay, sure. We can incorporate it into that.
Any other Commissioner comments? Anyone in the public have any comment? Then we'll close this matter. A motion?
I hereby move approval of this subdivision. And the applicant, and we note that DPW has now shown this as a resubmit prior to building permit. The Health Department is okay with it. The Zoning Board of Appeals granted a variance regarding the access width. In addition, the applicant shall comply with the CEO's comments regarding the FAR and shall provide an open space restoration plan to Conservation prior to filing. And there will be a 10-foot wide pedestrian easement to said open space. The applicant will also provide the ownership of the open space and the maintenance plan, which should be part of the declaration of restrictions. In addition, prior to filing with the land records on our staff report, we have a series of notes that are to be included. And I think the applicant is aware of those and shall include them. I believe that's all. Does anybody have anything else?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, Grencom Associates.
Bruce Cohen representing the applicant. This is an application for final site plan to allow the addition of 16 parking spaces at the, in the parking areas at 1445 and 1455 East Putnam Avenue. The aerial that's in front of you shows the location of the property. The two 20,000-square-foot office buildings are there. These buildings were built and developed as a part of the Commons condominium complex to the immediate north with 205 apartments. Immediately to the south is a very large Shell gasoline station with some retail and car wash facilities. Across the post road is 1700 East Putnam Avenue, which is a fairly large office building, formerly the old Conti-Nass plant. To the north is the Hyatt Hotel. Directly across the street is part of the parking area for 1700 East Putnam Avenue. The property was developed in the 70s under the RPHD, RPHDSU zone, which still remains in effect, but it no longer permits office use. So the use, the office use is nonconforming, but I believe that's the only nonconformity that we have here. The building itself, the buildings themselves, have increasingly been used for doctors' offices. In the past several years, the Commission and staff has seen applications to permit doctors to move in. Doctors' offices, dentist offices, and a variety of other office uses are allowed in, or was allowed in the zone before the zone was changed. The reason for the application to add parking spaces, it's clear that the main interest in this building has been among medical uses. And there are a number of vacancies coming up in the building. And the owners of the building wanted to have the ability to offer additional parking to potential medical dentists. There's no change to the building being proposed. There's no request to add floor area. The addition is lot coverage. And let me go through that.
Can I ask, just before you go there, can I ask you, based upon this fact that there are a number of different uses now in the building beyond just the traditional office use, were you able to develop any statistics regarding what uses are in the building today? What is their parking requirement? Because we know that there's office, there's doctors' offices, there's apparently some personal service and so forth. There's other...
Each time that a new tenant, since...
No, I'm just curious. Do you have a total of all of those things today, tonight?
No, I don't have it. But we have provided that in the past to the staff in connection with new tenants moving in.
Okay.
And I think there have been at least five or six separate applications made every time a new medical tenant moves in. And that's really the reason that we're here tonight, is to add the additional parking. But a great variety of office uses, I think, as you know, Mr. Maitland, are allowed in this building, including doctors, dentists, et cetera. And so there is a variety, but more and more...
They were allowed in the building.
Say it again?
They were allowed in the building when this building, when this was in the SU zone.
Exactly.
Yeah. But that came out about a year later, so...
It did, yes, indeed. So you couldn't build a building like this again.
But more of that point.
The... Pardon me?
Go ahead.
Let me briefly show you the change that we're requesting. This is in kind of schematic form, is a plan of the entire two-plus acres, showing the parking layout as it exists right now. And there's parking under each of these two buildings. What's essentially proposed is to cut a new driveway in here to permit additional parking to be installed here to the south, and then in a couple of other places throughout the site, some to the north and one to the south. That's the issue. And that's what's being proposed. And with it, we're proposing a new drainage plan and some additional plantings. So this has now been through staff, and it's been through Conservation Commission. And we had a hearing last night at ARC, and let me tell you about that. First of all, DPW has approved this. In their first report, they noted two things. First, they noted that we had an issue as to the grade of this driveway. That's been corrected. It was somewhat deficient. It's now compliant. I believe that Mr. Marucci may have provided an updated report. But in any event, we did get an email from him saying that the revised plan was okay. And Katie fortunately is shaking her head, yes.
It is.
Yeah, we have it.
And the other note from Mr. Marucci was that he reviewed and approved the proposed drainage plan. Both, ARC last night had several comments. One had to do with the design of light fixtures, which we can accommodate. And also, the fact that they felt that there was insufficient planting area. And we understand from the staff briefing that members of the Commission had a similar comment, and so did Alexandra Ma. And what ARC recommended was that these parking spaces that are shown this way be instead installed as angled spaces, thereby moving this curb back and increasing this planted area. And so we had Redness and Mead take a look at that. They've prepared a plan that does that. Eric Rains, who has done the landscaping, can now describe how he's been able to enhance the planting and add trees in light of that additional planting area.
Can you just quickly?
Yeah.
I think I know, but I couldn't find any drawing that said it. That new driveway coming in is going to be a one-way drive, right?
There is a...
I know, you're going to tell me there is one, but I couldn't.
Honestly, God, there is one.
And here it is. It's called Parking Plan, SE2.
That's what it was. You were hiding it in plain sight. I missed it.
Well, you know, who knows?
Getting tricky.
This shows one way this way.
Okay.
And it also shows things, shows things like stop signs and signage and that sort of thing. So Eric, would you talk a little bit about the revised planning plan?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Eric Rains, for the record, landscape architect. And Mr. Cohen's exactly right. Last night, there were those things that the ARC wanted us to have a look at. And so in working with Redness and Mead, we took their revised layout. And I have reductions of that area. So originally, on the drawings that you have in your packages and on the drawing that's on the easel here, those spaces, those seven spaces are perpendicular to the drive aisle. And in this configuration, it does two things. One is it allows us to pull, as Mr. Cohen said, pull the head of those spaces, if you would, farther south to create more room. But it also allows us to get the pedestrian circulation out of the drive aisle, which we thought was also very positive. And it takes people across the face of the building and alongside the parking spaces and at the head of the stalls before they go toward the building in the rear. So we feel like it's a good improvement. Originally, we had, let's see, we had, just to give you a sense of what, of the impact that allows us to have, in the application, there are four trees shown in that vicinity now. And in this configuration, we have three, six, nine, 10, we have 12. And we, in our discussions with ARC last night, we, they've asked us to look at opportunities elsewhere on the property to increase that quantity of proposed vegetation, which we'll do as well.
There used to be a rain garden in that area. Is that gone?
It's still there. No, it's still there.
Oh.
We didn't show it on, this was, we focused on just a tree planting in this.
I understand, but it's still going to be within this plan that you've...
Yes, yes.
It's just not shown?
Correct.
Okay. One of the other comments, I think, from, I think it came from Conservation, whether the size of the planting material could be increased.
Mm-hmm.
Was that at all discussed last night?
It wasn't discussed last night, but certainly increasing the caliper of the trees wouldn't, it's not an issue.
Well, because that would certainly help...
Right.
If they were larger.
Right.
Is there any way, was there any discussion to do anything more in this area?
We looked at that. The way that, where the property line falls is outside the wall. And there is space between the wall and the back of the public sidewalk. But we didn't discuss planting, like, street trees or something out there. We felt that, at least in my office, we felt that the rest of that area of East Putnam doesn't have that kind of planting. So we didn't, we didn't think that it would be a good suggestion to make.
So was it, it seemed like the ARC from the draft minutes that we have were generally accepting of the concept of removing the wooded area in favor of the parking with the enhancement they even proposed in the green spaces. Is that...
Yes. And what they asked us to do was to investigate the possibility of accomplishing the things that they put forth last night and then submit that back to staff. And then they'll review it and then, and then have an opinion, a final opinion.
And did they, did they see the proposed plan that would have the telecommunication equipment on the building? Because is it that front building or is it the building in the back?
I don't know anything about that, actually.
Well, that would have, shouldn't that have been to them when that was proposed to us a month ago, six months ago, whatever it was?
Right, but now the proposal that was before us doesn't show that. So that's some say it's reconciling those two projects. So they've seen it, and they opined on it previously. But I'm wondering, I think it might have been...
But there's nothing on the ground that had anything to do with the telecommunications.
Right, but what I was thinking is that since there'll be more exposure of the building now, and the building will...
That front, the front building is where the telecommunications is going, right there. I don't think there's, it's pretty much on the street now, and I don't think that's changing. Because that front parking lot, the only thing that would be going in there is just the leg of the drive going south or west.
It wasn't mentioned at all last night.
Okay.
And the only other thing that, as Mr. Cohen mentioned, was that they asked us to look at a light fixture that didn't have a curve on the top, which we said's not a problem.
You are going to, there are some areas of permeable pavement involved in this.
Yes.
I guess all the new will be permeable. And I also see some notes around the drawings and so forth, the other areas of the permeable.
Right. I can point those out. We have John Conti from Redness and Mead.
But let me ask you just one last question. All of the parking spaces are going to be restriped to meet the today's standards for width?
Yes.
Okay. Was there any thought given to, I mean, restriping is a simple thing. Removing all of the pavement and going to permeable is a different thing. So now we're going to have some permeable and some non-permeable. Your presentation's falling apart.
We are, we're adding something like 6,900 square feet.
How much?
6,900 square feet, is that right? 6,800 square feet.
Of permeable pavers and porous asphalt.
It's only a tricky thing in that, of course, there's a different maintenance standard with permeable paving than there is with regular. And how do you...
We're aware. Unfortunately, the owners of the building, sure, the Collins family that originally developed this, are active managers of the property. And they're the ones that take care of the property and are obliged to keep the permeable pavers permeable.
Do we? I assume they're asphalt. Isn't it asphalt? It is permeable asphalt, right? Katie, do we have any, do we have any way to assure ourselves that this, I mean, I think the permeable asphalt's like on a six-year standard or something for a maintenance, the vacuuming. Do we have anything in the, to assure ourselves that it's going to get done?
Well, there's the maintenance agreement that they...
Is there one for permeable pavement?
You mean the one that's been developed?
Do we have one?
We have worked with other property owners, not very many of them, but we have, there are some standards that we have in town in terms of the maintenance of it. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I know we have worked on that with other property owners.
Can you submit, you will submit a schedule or a...
Well, we'll submit the customary storm water management agreement.
Right.
And bearing in mind your comments, we'll be sure that we comply with any applicable downtown standards on maintaining porous asphalt or permeable pavers.
And just like with any property, I mean, the stormwater maintenance agreement does get filed and it's part of the record. But is Mr. Cohen saying it'll just be enhanced to...
The trouble is, there's going to be three spots disjointed around the property. So I don't know. We need a red line around, I don't know.
Well, I do believe that the engineering drawings show that.
Did they show a stripe or something in there?
They show exactly where the permeable surfaces would be installed.
Well, they may show, but the question is, once it's all done, doesn't it look the same?
No.
It is identifiable?
Yes.
After six years?
Yeah. It's a totally different texture.
Okay.
It does show on the engineering drawings. And we'll agree in the stormwater management agreement...
Okay, as long as there's a plan in the stormwater management...
That we can refer to.
You can just refer to where these areas are and that with...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Luca, I'm struggling a little bit to figure something out. These are legally nonconforming uses, and we're expanding the number of parking spaces associated with them. So is that an intensification of an, or an expansion of a nonconformity?
Well, it's not, the use itself is not being proposed to expand. So in other words, the number of doctors is not being proposed to expand. Is that correct, Mr. Cohen?
That's correct.
Well, I believe that Mr. Cohen said originally that this was done in anticipation with more, of more doctors coming in. But that would also be, that's how you open.
Occasionally, a medical use will require fewer spaces than an office use, depending on what the use is. So we don't really know. But we do know in terms of making the buildings more attractive to medical users, that they want to see a greater availability of parking. And fortunately, we've got the area that we can provide that. But there's no addition, right now, we're not proposing any new space being occupied. But when we do, we'll do what we always do.
And I think that's where Mr. Maitland, yeah, I think that's why Mr. Maitland was keen on getting the count. Because there's, when you have a legally nonconforming use, you can't, you can't intensify that or expand that, so to speak. In other words, if you have a certain number of doctors and that's, that's the maximum in the building, you can't then have more because that would be, that would be more of a nonconforming use. But if it went to another doctor's office or another type of medical facility, as long as the number of doctors remain the same, therefore, the parking count stays the same, then there's no, there's no problem with that.
Let me ask you differently. You're making... Let me ask you differently, you're making, you're taking up more area for the non-conforming use by adding parking.
Well, what's, what's of interest, though, is, is what Mr. Cohen was saying, is that they're trying to make the building more attractive. In other words, it might be tight on parking, but there's not necessarily a major parking issue. Is that correct? But you're just anticipating that there might be and therefore the prospect of being able to bring in a tenant and saying, don't worry, we've got plenty of parking, it's going to be better for them under this scenario. However, it's a scenario that hasn't existed yet.
Well, how about if we got what Mr. Maitland requested and got this, what you were asking for? What are the actual uses right now? I, I recognize that Mr. Cohen said he'd given it to staff before, but we got the actual uses.
But they've come in over the years.
Other applications.
As of today.
What are the uses and what is the parking demand?
Well, we'll absolutely give you that.
And then if we could get as well, while, while you're getting that, if you could be kind enough to give us an extension and also since we have this comment from Conservation about how the mitigation measures do not appear to be adequate, if you could connect with Conservation in the interim and make sure that this new proposal for the landscaping and the bigger caliber trees and the turning the parking and all of that, that, that meets with, because it's a trade-off here that we were discussing yesterday, which is, it's better for the customers, the clients of the building, that you're adding wider parking and more parking spaces, but we, we have this conservation trade-off and to, to get a little bit more comfort on that.
Well, the A R C did not only discuss that in general terms, but they were very specific as to how they thought we should approach a solution, which we have, and as you heard from Eric Rains, with a considerable enhancement of the, of the planning, which we expect to, you know, review with A R C. So I was hoping that perhaps you could review what site plan review requires and then allow us to go ahead and.
Well, it's pursuant to the site plan requirements that were, to 615, that we're asking you these things about the balance with the landscaping and the preserving the natural features and the, the use versus the parking, what the present uses are. It's, it's to meet those site plan considerations that I was asking.
Well, I do think that in Alexander's comments too, as it does say that all of the above mitigation measures appear not to be adequate to compensate for the loss of green space and significant increase in hard surface. It is strongly recommended that the applicant explore additional mitigation measures such as planting more trees, which would grow taller and maintain better proportion with the tall buildings than the proposed small trees. So I think they've done that with this plan they gave us tonight. They've done it with agreeing to go to larger caliber trees. So I think they go a long way towards meeting her suggestions. The addition of, her last suggestion was to install a roof garden, which the existing flat roofs could easily accommodate or replace entirely, entire areas of asphalt with permeable pavement, which they've said they're not going to do. And the roof areas are not going to support any, I doubt seriously if these buildings were designed to carry any additional load on the roof. It would be very unusual in that time of, when buildings were developed then to have.
Let me show you what the areas that were impacting. I happened to be on the second floor of this building last week and I looked at, and I happen to have my iPhone with me, and I took a photograph of the area that we're proposing to cut that driveway. And this is it. I did make some copies so that you could see.
Yeah, I kind of like the way this, I, I.
You like that, huh?
No, I very much like the way this looks in the summer and I'm very familiar with this building.
Well, me too. I'm there all the time. So what this is.
There's a yoga studio in this building.
There's a, there's a physical therapist there too. Anyway, what this was, was as you could see, there's a wall, this was created by a wall here and a wall over here, and it was left over from the excavation of the existing.
But there don't appear to be very many mature trees. These are saplings.
But it's pretty, in the summer, it feels very wooded in the back.
We've got a plant in that area.
I wanted you to see exactly what it was that we were talking about. This is not really what I call a mature forest. This is what Eric Rains calls volunteer trees, that just plonk themselves down.
You know, again, I really want to see this whole issue with the uses and the parking. I would like to see it because I, it feels strange to me if the building is conforming now to be adding parking since those uses are, now, Katie, you're saying that it's not an intensification of, of a legal non-conformity, but to me, it's taking up more, more, it's taking up existing green space to service that non, that legal non-conformity.
Right.
And I would like to get more comfortable with that. I mean, if the rest of the commission doesn't agree, that's their call.
I can certainly give you another set of documents that we've provided in the past in terms of the present uses and parking allocation. That I can do.
And it would also be interesting to know what the perceived or real problem is out there that's prompting this application in the first place, because you're asking for something so that you can market the building more effectively, but it's, it's confusing as to what the problem is right now.
There is no problem now. There's, there's lots of space.
So then why, why are they proposing to remove the green space in favor of parking? I mean, do they?
Because we anticipate that the space that's empty and anticipated to become empty will become filled and then we won't have enough.
But it hasn't been a problem.
If, if there are medical uses.
Is this specific to a certain tenant or is this just general?
Absolutely not, because we wouldn't take the chance of not getting approval for that tenant at the same time. We have no tenant.
But it hasn't been a problem. Go ahead.
Well, I was just wondering how much is empty in the building? What's the vacancy in the building now?
I don't know that, but there are, there is some vacancy.
That would help us to get a sense of that, you know, the issue we deal with in the P O C D is people tell us, don't, don't let them pave over Paradise. So.
Does that picture show a lot of Paradise to you?
I'm just saying, you know, you put your finger in the dyke wherever you can.
Mr. Cohen, can you just come over here just for a second and just show, just, I just want to just understand exactly what we're, right, which, which one are we?
I, I was right over here looking down into this area when I took that picture.
So this, so, so you would be removed, so that?
This is, this, Katie, is this.
Okay. So then that means that there's going to be a considerable wall here than one, if this is removed, right?
Well, it'll be graded up.
It will be, okay. So what's the safety issues associated with this, with this existing wall here and the, and jumping over that?
The existing wall isn't going anywhere. It's going to stay there.
But how, what's the height of, on the other side? If someone was walking along the top of this wall?
So far, nobody's jumped over, but it's been here for 40 years.
Right, because now, because, but if you're removing all of this.
You mean, it would be really attractive to jump into a parking lot?
Well, this is the question. I mean, if a car hits it, goes over, I mean, what's, what is the height on that other side? It's a safety question.
We can tell you.
That's the parking, which, actually, I think it's the parking over there. No, that's the gas station right there. It's got the way down here.
It's four feet.
It looks like it's four feet now.
Yeah, it's going to stay four feet.
This is the part. It's confusing.
It's the wall that she's.
I'd have to look at the existing drawings now.
What I'm saying is if you're removing all of this and you've got, you know, what's, it looks like a four feet here and a four feet here and you're going to remove all this, it's got to be closer to eight feet or six feet.
In the future.
Once all of this is removed. It doesn't seem like this eleva.
Is this what's happening?
Right, but this all is, because this is all being removed. So what's the elevation from the top, to top of that wall to the proposed grade?
And there's no cars in it, so.
And then this wall.
But isn't all of this being removed?
That's the guy.
Okay.
These, these steps are coming from. These cars here.
So this, this is?
Here, there's real cars here.
Okay.
There's real cars over there. So I think he was a little bit wrong when he said he took it from that corner of the building.
Right, so what I'm.
Oh, no. What happens is you get a road coming through here and you get some parking spaces and you, and you kind of clear up this. See, see this thing, this rock thing here? That's this rock up here.
Okay, okay. So what, and, and it, look, if he does, if he redesigned. That's why they had the problem where, remember, Nick was telling us yesterday that, that there's, it's steep and he's, I mean, that's, it was his point, that it's steep, that it's level in the front and steep in the back. And that was what the issue was with being on the site. Okay, we've, we're sort of.
The elevation of the post road, John, Mr. Conti?
What's the elevation of the post road?
My name's John Conti. I'm from Redniss and Mead. It's about 99. Ninety-nine is the elevation.
Of the roadway?
Well, we don't have spot elevations in the roadway on, on the sidewalk.
Sidewalk's 99.
It, it varies. It slopes down.
Okay, and then the existing stone wall that's against the post road looks like it's about three feet high, so that would make it 102?
Well, again, it varies, but the top of the wall, there's some spot elevations here, 101.
Okay.
So it's freestanding now. It's a freestanding wall. It will become a retaining wall.
So you're going to take the stone wall down and build a retaining wall and replace the stone?
That's correct.
And what's the distance down to the parking lot?
It, it varies, but approximately four feet.
You know, I'm looking at cars here that are four feet height to begin with, right? And then this looks like it's significantly more up above the cars. Am I crazy here?
Well, but see how, on this side, see how this actually is peaked?
But it feels level going in.
But that's four feet, a car would be about four feet tall and you're here.
But it feels level when you're driving and then it pitches down.
If it comes, they, I'm just sorry.
They're using Google Earth. There's a, if you call that area where we're, where the parking's being proposed, if you call that more of a knoll, it drops down toward the wall along.
Yep.
But the top of the wall, we just said, is 101.
Yes.
And what's the top of this existing retaining wall?
Looks like it's a couple of feet down, 18 inches down.
Looks like more like two.
Ninety-six.
Yeah, 96. So this is, and then this parking lot looks like this is about 91 then.
Right. Three plus one.
And so we're, all we're saying is, so the new retaining walls, top of walls 101 and the parking lots, so that retaining walls can be roughly 10 feet high on the, on the parking lot side.
Maybe that would be probably the extreme. As you move toward this, to the west, grade comes together, both of those elevations get closer together, which is, which is the reason that the existing wall becomes a retaining wall.
You're talking about the wall interior to the site now, not the one that runs along East Putnam Avenue? Yeah, that wall.
The wall interior to the site is, the top of wall is 92 and some spots, bottom of wall is 87, 95, 92, 87.
It varies, but I believe that the tallest point is, is roughly six feet.
Yeah, but, well, whatever. I did the, I'm just reading from your drawings, that wall has elevations. So five from, that's five feet plus three, so that's almost eight feet at one point there. And then that's seven, that's five feet. And as it comes towards the shale station, it gets, it gets 87 to 92 is five feet. So it seems to be five feet until it hits a rock outcropping and it goes into the rock outcropping. So the site work on, on the, on the wall, the, where those trees are, the elevations are 96, 100, 97, 96, 95. So they will be taking that out and it'll go down to around 86, 87 maybe? That's what the existing parking is.
I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
I'm looking at drawing number PTS.
Yes, but where on the drawing?
Over here. I mean, this is the wall you're removing.
Yeah, that's currently a retaining wall. That's currently a large retaining wall.
It's the retaining wall that's holding up the trees.
Yes.
Okay. So that's a retaining wall that's coming out. This wall that's coming along here.
I believe that's freestanding, but meaning it's not retaining grade.
Bottom of the wall is 95 and it's 95, yeah, it's 95 both sides of the wall and the top of the wall is 99.
Right, so there's like a parapet that comes above grade, but it's not retaining grade.
So that wall is remaining or is it being removed and have to be rebuilt?
It's being removed and rebuilt.
Because it's going to become a retaining wall?
That's correct.
Okay. Will it be built in the same alignment or will it get moved closer to the property line?
It will be built in the same location.
It's just, okay.
Could we see everything that you're now proposing to do based on the A R C comments addressing Conservation and then also while you're at it, giving us the, the uses and the parking demand? I think.
And the vacancy.
Would it be helpful to see a cross-section of that area?
Great idea.
Did you hear that, John? You'd like a section?
We're not trying to ruin your holiday.
A section.
Although, Mr. Maitland has accused me of such.
That's the, that's the section. So you'd like another review by Conservation? You'd like to?
Well, you know, if you're going to, because they make that comment and I think Richard's saying, based on what you're doing, it should be fine. So if you could sort of dot the i's, but if we could see, some of the commissioners are asking about that, that wall, the whole thing with the uses and the parking.
I heard you want a section. We'll give you a section. And you'd like some figures about what uses are in the building and how much parking they're taking out.
Right. And the vacancy.
And that, that retaining wall can't be more than five feet because it's in the front yard.
More than, how many feet?
Six feet. The structure is six feet.
I think it's six feet.
The structure can be in the front yard.
So I just pointing.
It won't be because Mr. Maitland will pick it up if it is.
Well, I'm just.
Well, you never know. He might.
I'm just suggesting.
Listen, forewarned, forearmed.
You got it.
Something like that.
I'm just suggesting that you bring that to John's attention.
Smile. I think we're going to need an extension, Mr. Cohen.
Just, well, before we go to that yet, is there any, any other comments from commissioners?
Sorry.
Any comments from the public? Okay, now we'll see about an extension.
Sorry.
It would be ideal if, not to ruin people's holidays even further, but if we could get, get it to the second January meeting, which would be the 25th. I might be able to get you on the 10th, but just to give us that flexibility because it's likely that the 10th is, there's no room at the end. Unless, unless something moves.
This, this will take like a minute.
Yeah, if it's possible, it's possible.
Look, look at what I have now. I have a new one.
Okay. Item number three. Three Pure LLC. Is that even close?
I don't, I honestly can't help you on that one.
Well, it's close enough to get you to come to the microphone.
Isn't that a requirement to make a presentation?
Okay, what do you call your clients?
I call it thurcifer.
They're poor.
For those of you who haven't quite figured it out yet, it is the name of the applicant in reverse, Mr. Rupert.
We're not that smart.
No, we didn't get it.
We didn't get that at all.
Didn't even occur to us.
You take credit for the name.
Yes. And how, okay, whatever. Okay. Is this the habitat enhancement?
No, no need for that.
Okay, well. Oh, I got two, Mr. Here. Does everybody have one? Does everybody have one?
Yeah, everybody has one.
This is a nice picture.
What I provided for you is something that we'll discuss in a couple of minutes, so initially I'll just go through the basics that you're all familiar with. Mr. Mark Kazakowski did a very good and thorough job of summarizing everything, so what we have is a little more than eight acres. We're in the four acre zone, so I proposed two lots. The lots were designed around the desire by the owner, Mr. Ruprecht, to save the existing dwelling. So you'll see that the northerly boundary of the parcel X lot is set so as to be more than 50 feet. In fact, it's 51.2 feet, so that we can save the existing house and have the proper setback in the RA4 zone. That basically dictated the shape of the lots, as to where the circles could fit, because we didn't want to converge the back of the lot on parcel Y, which would prohibit or preclude us building a home within the circle. So the owner, the applicant retaining it, a attorney, Ms. Melissa Klauberg, who is celebrating her office party tonight, so I'm doing the dirty work. I told her that she should have one for me, I'm sure she is. But regardless of that, Melissa did the deed history, and she will ultimately prepare the final declaration of restrictions that identifies the open space and the conservation easement areas that we have identified. Because there is only excess land of approximately 6,900 square feet, following the normal course of business with the commission, we dedicated that excess land to the open space in fee. And then following the process and procedure that you imposed on us for our recent subdivision on Round Hill Road, we added conservation easements to bring up a total of 19.7% of the lot to be set aside in either open space and fee, which is taken away from the lot area, and then restricted further by a conservation easement. So we have 19.7% of the lot set aside as open space or conservation easement, well in excess of the 15% normally preferred. The lot shape, the area, and the frontage all comply with the RA4 zone. So we developed a detailed development plan. And presented that to the wetlands agency and to the health department, and both of those agencies approved the development. The wetlands agency further imposed on us a request for a dedication of a landscape area, which I've highlighted on your plan in bright green, which in some cases is approximately 35 feet minimum from the edge of the wetlands that were defined. And what we've agreed to do with that is to set that aside as a meadow. And that was a condition of the wetlands approval, which was granted in August. So we have approximately three acres of the eight acres set aside or encumbered in some way in an environmentally significant manner. The buffer strip will follow the contour that's set up on the landscape plan, prepared by Bill Kenny and approved by the wetlands agency. And it'll be delineated with some boulders all the way along that line. So we have about three acres encumbered through the permit process of the wetlands agency, and 19.7% of the lot set aside in conservation easement or open space. The only negative comment that was made, which you're aware of, is the one by Mr. Couture, the CEO, who noted that the plan that we had prepared at the request of the owner had the home not entirely compliant with 203D, 30, whatever, 203D. So what we've done is I took the plan and demonstrated very clearly on the plan that you have in front of you how the future development could easily take a home and put it within the circle to comply with the section that is of concern to Mr. Couture. The other option, of course, would have been for the owner, if he really wanted to build the home that he had designed, he could have sought a variance, which I think in this case could have been granted. But I'm not going to speak for the ZBA. So it's very simple to see then, that you can take a home, build it on the flat, within the setback requirements, not destroy the knoll that's very prominent on this property, which we intended to save and will save. We did not change the driveway to accommodate the demonstration that it can be done. The studio remains right where it was, the driveway remains right where it was, the pool remains right where it was, the open space is not affected. Therefore, all I've done is demonstrate very clearly that there's no reason to think that you can't build a home on this lot in accordance with the regulations that require a third of the home to be built within the circle.
I mean, you're demonstrating that to us this evening, which is fine for the subdivision, but obviously when you get around for a building permit, you're going to have to-
Correct, and what happened?
You're going to have to deal with it then.
Yes, sir, and after, and as is the normal course of business now, the final plans are provided to staff, reviewed, sent to DPW, so there's at least two more chances everybody gets to see that we've in fact complied with the regulations, or found another way. But anyway, it's a good plan, of course, we have an existing driveway serving parcel Y. We have a new driveway proposed because we felt it's very important, the owner felt it's very important to have the distinction of separation for security and privacy. We've proposed an easement to accommodate that driveway and the drainage, which was part of the plan that was approved by DPW. The health department has approved the designs for both properties, and therefore I think that we've demonstrated that everything is in compliance with our health, environment, zoning, and subdivision criteria.
The only thing is that the subdivision map that you submit-
Yes.
Needs to have on it the driveway-
Yes.
Easement.
Yes, the driveway easement, which is defined in the development plan, will be added to the record sheet.
And also a drainage easement going from-
What we need for-
Going back to the driveway.
Yeah, what we need for the drainage easement is here, we've called out for the driveway easement, the easement for driveway and drainage, because we have this rain garden.
The rain garden that goes into the level spreader in the forested area.
And so we have that single easement there. The drainage for parcel X is self-contained, the drainage for parcel Y is self-contained, except for the driveway.
The only other thing is, I wondered if that enhancement area, it's called the Habitat Enhancement Buffer Planting.
Yes, sir.
If that should be shown on the subdivision map?
I would think not, because it's a condition of the wetlands permit, and it's going to be delineated by boulders, which are in the process of being placed now. And I don't think it's really necessary to further encumber the property. It's going to be a meadow, which means that they can cut it, and it doesn't-
How does that encumber it? I don't know how that encumbers it.
It does, because if you put it on a record sheet, then you're suggesting that it can't be changed, but it's not under your purview, it's under the purview of the wetlands agency. So somebody could come back and ask for a modification of that condition, whereas the conservation easement line can't be modified without your review.
But on the other hand, the declaration of restrictions dictates how that area is maintained, managed, et cetera. And that we've usually used language that says, you know, in coordination with the wetlands agency, et cetera. So that it's, because it's this commission that retains the jurisdiction of the open space, obviously respecting the wetland regulation.
Because you do show on there, you show the, in that little box right under your palm of your hand, palm.
Yeah, we refer-
As a reference to the IWWA decision.
Yes.
So I felt that if you have that reference on the drawing, actually showing it in detail, you could also, at that point, also refer to Mr. Kenny's drawing, if you wish, I guess. But it seems kind of important to a subdivision map, but maybe I'm, what do you think? Should be on.
Show the wetland buffer.
It's going to be in the declaration of restrictions, anyway.
So the wetland buffer, you're saying, should be in there, the restoration?
Well, it's not a wetlands buffer, it's called a Habitat Enhancement Buffer Planting.
Basically, it's being re-seeded with a metal mix, so that it's denser.
Whatever, but at least that then ties the subdivision map to IWWA.
Required as a condition, we would certainly accept it.
Mr. DeAndrea, did you have a chance to look at the conservation comments?
If they came in today, I did not.
No.
If they came in yesterday, I did not.
No.
If they were not included in your staff report delivered on Monday, I did not.
They came in this week.
I can predict what they are, what are they?
Well, she's suggesting that the proposed restoration area would create an opportunity for the open space. And she's suggesting, she's recommending that the applicant consider relocation of the open space to the area designated for Habitat Enhancement Buffer Planting.
The answer to that is it cannot be done, it was not well thought out. The excess land that we have is the only place where there's excess land. That's it.
But if the open space is in that area that is going to be planted and protected, wouldn't you be killing two birds with one stone?
No, you're not. Here's what you've got, you've got a little area dedicated as open space and fee. The rest of it is encumbered by a conservation easement. What more could they possibly want? Nothing more. You're giving up 19.7% of the entire property and encumbering about three acres of the eight acres. So I think that those suggestions are out of line.
Designated, to have it as deeded open space, sure, I mean-
What's your point? I don't know the point.
So what she's asking is, this area that's already being planted and that can't be built, to make the open space there, and so I'm missing-
So you're suggesting taking a small triangle, and where would you like to put it?
I'm not suggesting it, Mr. DeAndrea, I'm reading you the conservation comments, you may look at them.
I understand, I did read them.
You may have my copy if you would like, and I'm asking you to comment on them.
Okay, I'm going to comment on them. The small triangular area that we have back here might be suggested by Ms. Mock to be put over here on the south side. To what end?
Well, what she's saying is that it's better quality to have as open space.
We have it protected by the buffer, which you want as a condition on the record sheet and/or the conservation easement.
Well, I'm not in agreement with what Alexander's saying, so. You might want to get her comments back, if you're- I don't think that it, her comments are-
Don't think there's anything gained.
She's giving us her comments, I don't agree with them, that's all.
I don't think there's anything to be gained by altering that solid line.
I see nothing to be gained, because the land is being encumbered with a lot of stuff already, and I mean, that Habitat Enhancement area and so forth, I don't know what IWWA, they must have put some restrictions on it. Or is it just do it and then we walk away?
The restrictions were that we dedicate it, we monument it by placing of the boulders.
Monumenting it, so I don't see anything else to be gained by it. And to put it over there on that little triangle would mean that the other people have got to get a pedestrian easement now walking across someone else's land to get the benefit of it. As it's located now, both property owners get a benefit of that open space.
Well, what she says is preserving an upland area is more beneficial than putting another layer of protection over an already regulated area of the wetland water course. Just, I'm giving you the comments. The other thing that she raises, Mr. DeAndrea, is, and I'm going to, is that when you develop parcel Y, that if you consider, if you could consider saving the 40-inch oak that's on site, and that that could be done by orienting the building differently.
And we've demonstrated that we can orient the building differently, so we can save that oak, and that oak that she's referring to must be in here somewhere. There's some large oaks, a couple of beeches. I don't know specifically which one she's talking about, we're saving 236-inch oaks that flank the driveway. There's a dogwood that we're going to lose, we're going to lose a pine. And there's a beech that's going to be sacrificed, but I don't see the one that she's referred to. But regardless, we've got a significant amount of natural trees there that have been preserved. We're saving the entire stand of trees on the knoll, we're saving all the trees in the front section. It's a good plan, I think it's-
But I think the other thing, too, I don't know that this, will this property ever come back to us? Will it go over 10,000?
No, sir, no, definitely not.
Around 150,000? So this will never come back to us, so that's-
You're right.
So the only people who will see it then is when you file for a zoning permit, it'll be administrative.
It'll come back through staff and then-
So what we could do then on this one, if it was a condition of this, that when it comes back to staff for the zoning permit, they'll try to, they'll work with the applicant to find the 40-inch oak she's talking about.
No problem.
Is it a condition that that remain, or is it that it just be considered?
I think her words were considered.
Try to save the-
Try to save it, so.
What she's saying, what she actually said was that if you developed it a little differently than is on this now, you could save the tree and do less grading.
Now, just for your comfort level, it may not be that the owner, current owner, will build this home. But it's a home that he wanted to have considered, and it was designed by the panel. And we implemented it in the plan, and whether or not that ultimately gets built remains to be seen, of course. But we recognize the concern expressed by Ms. Mock, and we will certainly be cognizant of it in the final design.
Did we ever get an FAR calculation on the existing houses that-
No, but to that end, I took the liberties of analyzing it here, just from a grade plane standpoint. We're up to 94% of green area, so-
So you're 94%.
It's a tiny little home.
No, I know, but now it doesn't look like you're going to exceed the FAR for the site either.
Here's what I have, I have, the dwelling footprint is 2,500 square feet. So 5,000 square feet is nowhere near-
It's half of what you could do.
The requirement allowable.
And the green space for that site is good, too?
And the green space is 94% covered.
This is RA2?
Excuse me, 4.
So it's 92 is the-
It's 84% in the RA4.
And you've got 92.
On parcel X, the existing home, we have 93.9.
Perfect.
And as currently proposed, on parcel Y, we have 90.6.
Parcel Y is not before us yet, so-
Correct.
That's something to be done in the future. So for the subdivision map now, we're going to put on it the driving act, the driveway access, the drainage access, easements, easements. And you will put the Habitat Enhancement Buffer Planting. Thank you.
Which has been computed and staked on site.
Okay, and well, IWWA has already said it's going to be demarked with, demarcated at the boulders. Okay.
Do you want to note also about the 40-inch oak that it-
I think the secretary here is writing that furiously. Fingers are bleeding. Any other comments for the commission? Any comments from the public? I think we can close this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll get closed. Since this is part of the regular meeting. A motion.
I hereby move approval of this final subdivision application, and note that the applicant will show compliance with the CEO comments regarding Section 6203D.
Can we just say that he will submit the plan, just submit the plan to staff?
Yeah.
You'll do that.
Okay. That whereas the IWWA had approved this, but required restoration in the wetland water course buffers with a native metal mix and trees as shown in the landscape plan, the applicant will provide information verifying the green area on parcel X, as well as the FAR on the existing house. The subdivision map shall show the driveway and the drainage easements, as well as the Habitat Enhancement Buffer area. And the applicant shall make every effort to save the large trees on site, and specifically the 40-inch oak, especially, I think it's related to developing parcel Y.
Yes.
I think I got everything, green area, yeah?
Did you get a name on the open space?
We do, Melissa has decided that it's-
Okay, well, it'll just be on the record sheet.
160 Bedford Association, yeah.
Okay, so the name on the open space and the declaration? Okay.
I think you might want to just note that DPW was okay on this for the building permit.
Oh, actually, I take it back, on DPW, I had something to add. They are okay to go to building permit, but they wanted it verified that the tree warden has actually okayed the removal of all the trees that may potentially block the sightline, because that was what their issue was, to make sure the tree warden had okayed it. 'cause that was what their issue was, to make sure the tree warden had okayed it.
At that end, we have a...
And the tree warden has okayed it, but it doesn't say all the, what their second comment was, it doesn't say all the trees necessary to make the sightline, and we just need to make sure that it's all, all in place.
Trees were posted. We met with the tree warden on site. On November twenty-ninth of sixteen, we were issued a permit for work, tree work on town trees. So that was...
Yeah, and then somewhere they make a comment that it needs to be clear that it's all, any tree that affects the sightline is okay.
Yes, that's correct. And in fact, they're being removed as of today.
And add that the...
They're gone. By our permit.
And add that the health department has approved the septic system for both properties.
Yes.
And wanted the maintenance of the meadow in the declaration.
Right.
Yes, I think we said that, but maybe we didn't, so...
That was on the first one.
Okay.
Understood. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now... Okay, you're on your own on this one. Now, this time they have given us, now we have the same, we have the same...
We are opening the public hearing.
But they've now given us something that shows the building and the stuff. Thank you.
Mr. Maylin, members of the commission, John Tessie.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't say where we were. I just said we're in the public hearing, but this is item number five. R.K. Cat Rock LLC and Keith Ayet Alhet Steinberg.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, John Tessie representing the applicants. In connection with this proposed lot line adjustment between two lots that were the subject of a two thousand and six subdivision approval by the planning and zoning commission. Both lots are developed with single-family homes. Property is on Cat Rock Road in the RA two zone. The staff, I know, made a presentation to the commission earlier this week with respect to this application, and one thing that was brought up, and properly so by staff, was an issue concerning the configuration circle, two hundred linear foot diameter circle for the, for the rear lot, the flag lot, which is on lot number two. And we've submitted to staff, and I think staff submitted to you, a revision of the map...
Right.
That corrected that glaring omission. The original subdivision approval map did have the lot configuration circle budding up against the, the accessway.
She's got her own stuff.
And that did not. Now, we've corrected it by maneuvering the, the lot line between the two parcels from what was proposed. The overall reason for the lot line adjustment was to correct, which no one knows why, I don't know if correct's the right word, but, but do away with a triangular penetration of lot number one into lot number two, and they actually, in a pond area. Our clients, who basically own both, both parcels, really didn't want lot number one to have access to the pond and to have this penetration feeling that for both liability purposes and privacy purposes, that made sense. The other, that was one aspect. The other aspect was to do a better job of having the lot line adjusted along the, the front part of the common boundary, so that one parcel or the other, primarily lot number one, would own the, the bounding stone wall between the two parcels. There was a question of staff raised with regard to an easement area located adjacent to the accessway to the rear lot. The reason, I think it's somewhat self-evident, but the reason for the easement, which is an easement for the benefit of lot, excuse me, the rear lot, lot number two over lot number one, was over a green area. And the real reason there was to allow lot number one, since it's on the other side of a, of a wall, of the wall, separating wall, to be able to control the lawn area and the landscape area there, so that it's maintained. So, you know, your driveway looks nice coming in, basically. Because without that easement, they wouldn't have a right to maintain. It's that, literally that simple. The other easement we happen to show on the map is, is, 'cause the client decided he wanted to do one map fits all. Some of these things didn't have to be on, like this easement be on this map, but they're showing everything, was there's a stormwater, excuse me, catch basin, there's a catch basin on the property in the rear, again, lot number two, that ties in to a drain on lot number one. Basically, it's for the benefit of lot number two. It goes to a catch basin near the, near the street in front of the home on lot number one, where it becomes common. So the idea was there, was to file a, an easement, making, establishing both the right and the maintenance obligations of the parties with respect to that stormwater, how do you call it, main, pipe. So that, that's the story of the two easements and the lot lines.
Since, since this will be a filed map...
Yes.
The open space usually belongs to somebody.
The open space...
The name of the open space be put on this map?
Well, we'll put it on. I have the deed history. That, the open space area was established pursuant to a declaration that's on file. I can have that be added, and I'll just have to find out if it's been previously named. I really don't know, but...
Okay, but whatever the name is, when the map comes in for signature...
Whatever it is, the name either now or before, we'll, we'll put the name on the open space.
Okay, you took care of that. Now, I just, I must admit, I'm confused a little bit. Is this an equal area?
No.
So it's a total transfer?
Yeah, it's about, it's about, well, as the staff indicated, it's a thousand seventy-four, but when we made these adjustments, it goes up by about fifty-nine square feet or so.
Eleven thirty-six.
So it's about a...
Eleven thirty-six.
Eleven hundred thirty or thirty-six, yeah.
Your letter said thirty-six, huh?
Yeah, well, I was averaging.
So this is a transfer, then?
Yes, it's a transfer.
Of eleven thirty-six from eighty-two Cat Rock to eighty.
Yes, eighty-two, one to two.
All right. Any questions from the commission?
Just, you, just on Cindy's staff report, she, she was asking for the FAR from the existing lots.
Yeah. I have the, well, she's primarily concerned about lot, the front lot, because the other lot's getting more...
So I think we'll just ask you to provide that.
We'll provide, actually, I have it. It was handwritten, it's in our file since July. It was taken off the building permit, when they obtained a building permit.
It's his job.
No, I'm just saying, so it's handwritten, so you're not gonna find that very cool. But it, it shows we had about six hundred...
As long as it shows that we're okay.
Yeah, we had six hundred square feet to play with. This'll, this'll sap up about a hundred square feet of rights.
We're just gonna ask you to provide...
So we can provide this now or better typed up.
Why don't you just provide it to staff? 'Cause it's, is that okay to get it that way, Katie?
To get what that way?
The FAR.
This adds to my, our client.
Are you close?
We're, we're, we're over...
You need to have a microphone.
Hey, 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 Mr. Tessie.
We need a microphone.
Come on. We're six hundred, we're six hundred square feet above. This change will get, takes away about a hundred square feet, I think Ms. Maylin would agree. Well, it's nine times eleven thirty, which is about a little over a hundred square feet. So we're gonna be five hundred to the good.
And when, when was this house constructed?
Between two thousand and six and now, so it's subject to grade plane and everything.
So it's under the new regs?
Yeah, we can get you a copy of the building permit to show that, something more than...
Right.
I didn't write it. It actually came from the architect. And, but, we'll work that, I mean, just satisfy staff or whatever condition you want.
There were some other questions that Cindy raised. She, she said it wasn't clear that you had met all the conditions of the previous approval. Do you know where you stand on that? And it's...
Well, I read the previous approval. There were a lot of conditions, so I'm not really sure.
Okay, well, she raised it. And then the second thing was whether all the wetlands, wetlands had special conditions originally, and whether all of those have been satisfied.
Well, the bond, the permit may still be outstanding. These houses, I know were constructed by our client who bought subsequent, so I, they may still be, I'm not sure both of them are a hundred percent complete, but that's wetlands, that's a separate jurisdiction, a separate permit. I'm not sure what that has to do with a lot line adjustment.
Subdivision would, wetlands would be in the subdivision, so we would...
Wetlands gave a conceptual approval to the subdivision, then issued, then issued a, issued a permit for the construction of this house here.
Okay.
And the wetlands are shown on the map.
Yeah, the wetlands are back in here.
Well, they, you know, they kinda wandered through the map.
Why don't we just say all relevant conditions of any previous approvals, because there was a previous subdivision approval in oh-six?
Just carry those over?
And just carry those over, because they are relevant at this time.
Right. And one question is on eighty Cat Rock, whether the proposed lot area excludes the accessway all the way to the circle.
Yeah, it does.
The letter that he submitted to us says it does.
Yes.
'Cause I think that should be noted in the area tabulation, that it excludes the accessway to the, or some language thereof, so that it's not just a random number.
Excuse, excuse me. That's perfectly fine. That was on the original subdivision map.
Okay.
I thought he, I thought he called it out, but let me just see. Here, here it is. He calls it out on the map.
And what's that proposed use easement? I'm sorry if you said it and I missed it.
It's here.
The maintenance of the driveway, of the side of the...
It's not on the dri, it's not within the driveway access.
Right.
It's on...
It's on the side.
The, the stone wall, bounding wall, direction, which is, which is basically the south here. There's the accessway. Just north of that, there's a strip of land, it's seven, about seven feet wide, between stone wall and the accessway. So the client wanted the, the rear lot...
The stone wall is on the property of eighty-two.
Correct, on eighty-two.
What they want is that, they just wanna maintain that seven-foot strip, I assume.
The seven-foot strip on eighty-two to be maintained by eighty...
Oh, I see, okay.
So that, so that it's groomed, so that...
Nicer driveway.
Do we need to make...
Purely for aesthetic reasons.
Right. Well, is, and is that, that's a, that's a private agreement, presumably, right?
It's a private agreement that will be filed. As I said, the client's really still own, one in LLC form, and then the other one they own themselves, so...
So do they need a driveway easement shown?
No, there's no driveway on that.
So it's brass or something?
That's purely... Yeah, that's landscape area.
Okay, right.
Now, I'm jumping around a little bit. The, the comment that Cindy makes is that there's been no documentation provided that IWWA has signed off on this current...
IWWA has no, does not get involved in non-subdivisions. If you're, you were to rule that this is a subdivision, then you would have to go back, we would have to go back.
Well, her comment...
I'm just telling you the law.
Her comment is that it's, that land being transferred is wetlands, is wetland and not upland.
So what? They don't, the Wetlands Agency does not get involved in land transfers unless it's a formal subdivision.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you, Katie, for the nod.
Yeah, 'cause otherwise, I wouldn't believe him.
At least you haven't changed in twelve years.
Nope.
Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the public?
In the open space declaration, she wants to.
The open space declaration was filed, or they wouldn't have gotten building permits. It's mentioned in the deeds. We can submit another...
I don't know, so she, she missed it. Okay. All right.
You don't file, we don't, Katie, right, we don't file subdivision maps without the declaration simultaneously.
They won't accept it.
Tom Hegney did it.
Okay.
You believe him? Just curious.
I only believe staff.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Oh, and the commissioners sometimes.
Certain.
Certain commissioners.
Okay. Well, Merry Christmas.
Oh, just a second. I was asking if the public had any comments when you two started your own conversation. So we'll go back. Is any comments from the public? Okay, thank you. So we're closing this?
Did I just get dinged?
Pretty well. Good, you didn't know.
What?
You know. It's pretty soft. Number six. I, I try, but Locumarius, Macrius? Macrius? Huh?
Locumarius.
Locumarius, oh, all right, got it now. Usually it's L O C, but Locum, okay, good enough.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, on Larry Lieblin from SC Minor, representing the applicant. This project before you is for a special permit, for modifying a special permit that was granted already for the addition of a pool house. This project is first saw before you in two thousand and thirteen. It is under construction, and we are now, the applicant now is proposing a pool house, which will bring the total cubic volume, or the cart, excuse me, the existing cubic volume is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six cubic feet. The new pool house is twenty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-five cubic feet, which brings the new total to two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and eleven feet. The project is in conformance with FAR. The project is conformance with all of the zoning regulations. The project has received approval from the Wetlands Agency. The project has received approval from DPW, who's asking for the typical things that they asked prior to the issuance of a building permit as far as revised conveyance calculations. And the project has been reviewed by the zoning enforcement officer, who had three comments. And I believe that his three comments was the, that was just, one of them was the, the first one is the grade plane wall nearest to the spire is limited to height in five feet, and that's fine. Both window wells need to comply, which they will. And the bars will be limited to the wet bars, which they will. And the last one is a little confusing to me, saying the elevators must be counted, but the elevator was on the...
Because he's thinking of the whole property.
Right. The elevators are counted. When I reviewed the FAR, they were counted on one level and then discounted on the other two levels of the house. There is a drainage system. There's wetlands on the property. There's a boulder demarcation that the Wetlands Agency has asked, that is already installed. It's just a revision to one that you've already granted. Thank you.
Any comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Then we'll close this one.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item number nine, J&amp;J Greenwich LLC.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the applicant. We were before you last week, and there were a number of items that you wanted us to address, and I thought I'd just go through those briefly. The first is you asked us to convert this from a final application to a preliminary. We have given staff a letter which states that we are hereby converting it to a preliminary[1751.82] application. A second item was that you asked us to consider closing the southerly drive on Sheep Hill Road, which allowed for an entrance-only curb cut. We reviewed that with our client, our traffic engineer, and our civil engineer, and we have made a change here to close that curb cut. It allowed us to add two more parking spaces there as well. The other curb cut you wanted us to review was the one on East Putnam Avenue, to see whether we could install a right-hand turnout and a left-hand turnout lanes dedicated to each turning movement and one entrance in, and we have revised the plan that was submitted last week to show that we can accommodate that request as well. The, there were a couple of changes to the architectural plans. You asked us to have a plan that shows the mechanical units and where they would be located, and we provided that plan, along with full-size sections through the, through, not just the building, but through the site, to show that there is sufficient fill for the landscaping that we're proposing, and we included the section from west, from East Putnam Avenue through the house to the north of the site. I, I know there was a question about how does the curb end up the way it does. I spoke with Mr. Ridberg about that. The purpose of that section was to show the, the reference of the second floor of the proposed building with the first floor of the house, and that's what we were focused on, and that's what Mr. Ridberg focused on in terms of that particular map.
The only prob, I mean, did you shoot an elevation to the ridge of the house that's remaining on the property to the north? So in other words, what happened with your, with your photograph and, and the actual building itself, it's like off by about 12 feet, which seemed like an awful lot for perspective. I know there's going to be some perspective in the, in the photograph, because you're shooting at a house which is some distance away, but the curb in front of the house, if you look at it, the curb in front of the house is considerably below the curb in front of the buildings, and it shouldn't be.
For the record, Rudy Ridberg, well, you're right, and it's very difficult to take from a photograph to create it to an eighth-inch elevation to match that. So what we wanted to explain was that the elevation, which I think was shot by the surveyor at the time, is that the elevation of the second floor...
Right.
Is 83 and change, if I remember, is roughly the height of the first floor of this house.
Of the first floor. So, but do you have that?
So this house is a cape, so in reality, when you add nine feet, maybe, maybe it's 18 feet total. The proportion of this, because I took it in the street, started this project eight years ago.
Maybe it's grown since then.
No, it's a little confusing, because this height here and this height here don't line up, and it was very difficult to try to make that work.
Took a while.
It's straight on, as best I could make it work.
Since this is a, this is a preliminary?
Yes.
If we do move it to final?
Yes.
Could, could we at least correct?
Yes.
It's a nice image to have, but if you could shoot the ridge line and get that accurate?
We'll do that. We'll get Deandra to do that, shoot that, and we'll get this to view.
Yeah, then we'll know where it is, for sure.
We measured the width of the house as an eighth-inch scale, but I have a feeling the proportion of the photo changes.
It doesn't seem right.
We can fix that.
Okay. That was...
The other issues we went over last week really involved the traffic engineer, and I'd like our traffic engineer, Craig Yanis from Ty &amp; Bond, to go over his supplemental report that we submitted to you on Friday, and review the, the levels of service that would be proposed as part of the changes to the intersection of Sheep Hill and East Putnam.
What I would like, I couldn't find it in the report. The, the simple thing that I'd like to know is, on southbound traffic, since that seems to be the biggest problem, what is the current count in number of cars or vehicles during the peak hour, and how much is this project going to, and what's coming out of this project in that peak hour in the terms of number of cars?
I, I think Mr. Yanis can answer that directly. Maybe we'll just start with that and then go on to the rest of it.
All right, for the, for the record, Craig Yanis from Ty &amp; Bond, project engineer. So that was a perfect lead, and I have it right here in front of me. So the volumes for the background traffic volumes, the existing plus 1% per growth per year to 2018, shows that there's 234 in the morning peak. So this is southbound traffic on Sheep Hill Road, 136 during the weekday midday, 134 during the weekday PM, and 163 during the Saturday midday.
Okay, you got ahead of me writing it down. So do you have this written down to submit to us?
So, all these volumes are shown on, on figure six to nine within the traffic report. So...
I have the traffic report.
I can go over them again, that's fine.
Go over them again, please. 2:34 AM?
2:34, 136, 134.
What was 134?
That's the weekday PM peak.
So the 136 is...
Midday.
So it's weekday morning?
Yep.
Weekday midday.
Mid.
Weekday afternoon, Saturday midday. Those are the four.
No, I didn't, that's got three, the fourth one is, how much?
Saturday, 163.
163, Saturday.
That's Saturday midday, yep.
And for what period? I mean, how long a period?
So this is an hour period.
One hour.
This is a one-hour peak hour period. So we took the counts, we looked at them over the peak period, so two hours of counts at each of those timeframes, and we find the maximum number in the peak hour, and that's what we use for our analysis. So those are the numbers that we have.
Okay, so that's traffic.
So that's background.
Existing, that's background.
That's background. So at the opening of the development, I'm assuming it's open. So if you want to get the same numbers, then we could talk about the increase.
I want, yeah, I want the same, I want to know how much, what, what AM traffic is, is coming off the south, I guess coming from the north out, southbound, and coming into the property.
Okay, so I'll just run down the, the trip generation.
Before you explain that, is this the average over those five days that you took the traffic counts, or is this on, because you, you explained last time what days this was?
Correct.
So is this on one of those days, or is this the average of those days, or how does that work?
Correct. In order to do the counts and with the capabilities of our consultant, we took one peak period count, so one two-hour period on one of those days. I mean, I can get you the exact dates if, if we need to, but one two-hour period and finding the peak within that period.
Okay.
Okay, so talking about the site-generated traffic, so southbound in the morning peak, nine trips.
Mm-hmm.
So that's coming out of the development. During the other three...
Excuse me, coming out of the development?
Coming out of, out of this driveway here. Coming out of this driveway here.
Yes.
And coming out to this light.
How do you come up with that number?
So there's the trip generation for the total site, which is based on the land uses that are proposed on the site. So if I wanted to go over those numbers, I could give you the total numbers.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
But I was sort of interested, that's coming out of the, what's coming, I was, I guess, thinking what's coming in from the north. How many cars are coming from the north and coming in?
Coming into the, into the development versus the Sheep Hill driveway?
Well, coming off Sheep Hill into that northern driveway.
Okay, I can get you those numbers. Hang on one second.
Do we, Patrick, 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 do we have the report?
So obviously, there's nothing in the existing or the background for that. It'll be a new driveway. We assume that there was nothing on the site before, even though there is...
No, I understand that.
Few homes. Yep, so if I go to the...
When you, when you make your calculations of where the traffic is going to be coming from and into the site, you have to make some assumption that's going to be coming.
Correct, so the, the long answer is short, I can give you the exact numbers. I have them right here. We put 5% of the traffic coming in and out of that driveway from the north. So 5% coming southbound, making a left in, 5% going out.
Same number nine?
That is not the same number nine. No, let me get that number.
5% of the 234?
No.
5% of what number?
So we, we have the existing traffic volumes that's completely separate from these numbers.
Right.
So this is the proposed site traffic going to the site.
Right.
So the numbers I gave earlier are just existing southbound traffic.
That's existing, that's today.
Correct.
I want to know what this is, what is going to be the impact of this development on those traffic?
Right, so...
On that traffic.
In the morning peak?
So there's, there's morning peak coming out, you said there's nine going south?
That's nine going south accessing the light. So if you're, if you're talking about going southbound and making a left into that Sheep Hill, north Sheep Hill driveway?
Nine.
I have these numbers. It's one coming in, one, one coming southbound, left in.
Okay, got it.
Where is that in your report?
So it's in figure 11 through 13. 11 through 14, I'm sorry. So each peak hour has its own sheet, and this whole set has all the different existing background site-generated and combined volumes.
In the supplemental or original?
This is the original traffic report. So in the morning peak, that's southbound is one, is one vehicle. In the weekday midday, it's two vehicles.
What page do you want in the, what page do you want in the report?
So if you go to the, the figure section, it's figures 11 through 14.
Okay, now, two vehicles doing what, coming into the site or...
So...
Or going out of the site, going southbound?
Coming into the north driveway on Sheep Hill.
Coming in from the north.
From the north.
Two.
One in the morning peak.
One in the morning.
Two in the, in the weekday midday.
Yep.
And I believe it's two in the remainder, if I'm correct, yes. So two trips during the weekday midday, weekday afternoon, and Saturday midday coming into that development.
Okay, now going out.
Going back northbound.
No, going, I'm more concerned now going south on Sheep Hill, yes.
Okay, so looking at those numbers, so that's coming out of the development versus out of that driveway.
Right.
And coming southbound accessing the light at Sheep Hill.
Yeah, nine in the morning.
Nine in the morning, and then the other three peak periods are exactly the same. They're 26 trips.
26.
And just a comment on where these numbers come from. So we, we look at the land uses proposed on the site.
What's the summary of that?
If we go to just in front of the tables, the figures there, table three, down at the bottom.
Okay.
So these are the total numbers that, that come in and out of the site during the peak hour, and those are generated based on the use, and then we distribute them to the site based on the layout of the driveways and, as well as where the main access points are going to be based on, you have residential uses, they're going to be tending towards the highways to go to work, you have retail uses which tend to be more local.
So we have 19 apartments?
Correct.
Seventeen.
Well, it was 19 originally and reduced to 17.
So you're assuming that only half have cars?
No, that means that half are coming in or out of the development during the peak hour. There's, that's only one hour of the day. People go to work earlier or later, and that's what it counts for. So this data set comes from an industry standard, Institute of Traffic Transportation Engineers, Trip Generation Manual, based on the land uses, and it's something that the town traffic consultant reviewed and didn't comment on. And so we look at each use, we look at the size, and we estimate the total. So that, so there's each, on table three, you have the residential, the retail, and the office piece, and then the total.
So reading this report, you're saying there's 36 total movements in the AM peak?
Correct, in and out of the site. So 21 in, 15 out.
So now we only have two exits. What is the split of the 36 in the AM peak?
So the, the two and the, and the volumes that we're discussing earlier were just the number of trips we expect to come from the north and go into the site. That's something...
That wasn't the question.
Well, can you repeat the question? I'm not sure I understand.
You're, in your report, you're saying there are 36 vehicles...
Correct.
Coming in and going out.
Correct.
You disagreed to eliminate one of the exits.
No, that was not an exit.
No, we did not. We, we eliminated an entrance.
An entrance?
Correct.
How, just quickly distribute the 36 for that AM peak with between the two exits?
So in terms of...
And how do you come to that decision?
So in terms of the exiting traffic, we had two driveways before in the same locations. They're in the same locations today. Nothing changes there for what we did in the original traffic report. For the entering, instead of entering in that southerly driveway that we did have, which we no longer have, all the vehicles will travel to that northern driveway. So I need...
I'm sorry, what do you mean, the southern driveway still has an entry? The southern driveway to the, to the, to the south over on Sheep Hill was only to be for trucks?
No, no, I mean, it was an entrance only. The trucks, it was there because we were facilitating truck access. That doesn't mean a passenger car couldn't use this, that access. Either way, it's removed now, so...
No, I understand, but you had a great big sign there that just said, exit only, or entrance, exit from the inside out, from the side out, but I don't, all right, so you were saying both cars were planning on coming in there?
Correct.
Now they're not?
Well, now the driveway's removed, so yes.
It's even worse that the cars were coming in there, so I'm glad it's...
Right, I mean, that's the discussion we had. We were trying to facilitate the truck access, so we did remove it per the request from the DPW.
Okay.
So going to my question, we have 15 cars that you're saying are exiting during the AM peak?
Correct.
And you said nine were going...
Out the Sheep Hill driveway.
And only six?
Correct.
How did you come up with that mix?
So those distributions are based on the existing traffic streams, so we know that there's about a 50/50 split on East Putnam. So we look at the regional distribution, we look at where the highway access points are, we understand what the land uses are, and we distribute those, we, we estimate percentages and use the existing percentages to figure out, okay, there's 15 exiting cars, you know, 35% of them are going to go this way, 65% are going to go the other way, and that's how we figure that out. And so if you want to, if you want to look at that distribution a little further, it's on figure 10 of the traffic report. So that gives you the breakdown of where they're coming in, where they're going out.
You didn't update the figures based on...
Correct.
Information.
Correct. So in, in terms of that, as I mentioned, if we remove the southerly driveway on Sheep Hill, which we did, the only change to the analysis would, would be that all the entering trips would go into the north driveway. So the only change, because the way the driveways were laid out before, we assumed anybody from the north was going to access that back driveway anyway, so the only change between this figure and what's there now is that anybody traveling northbound on Sheep Hill wanting to access the site will have to go into the rear driveway.
And exiting up there, going south on Sheep Hill, how long do you think those nine cars wait?
So, I mean, that's getting into the improvements. Do we have any other questions on the volumes before we go to that?
Yes.
Section?
Remind me again of the uses that are proposed for the building?
So 17 apartments in these square footages.
Got it.
Might have been revised slightly, but we do know that they went down from here. 16,040 square feet of retail space and 7,000 square feet of office space.
I get the, I get the apartments, I get the office. The retail, the traffic, wouldn't the traffic generated by retail have a pretty wide variance, depending on what kind of retail you have, particularly like in the morning? You're talking about the morning.
Correct.
If you throw Starbucks in there.
And a few other high...
No Starbucks.
No Starbucks, why?
Because we, we're not, we don't permit it. I mean, we don't permit any high turnover for that.
So is that noted on this?
You have to make that a condition. I mean, we...
I thought that, I thought it, I thought...
It was noted, it...
It was discussed under previous applications, and I believe there is still a note, but I think that that needs to be stated unequivocally.
In a prior application, we did agree that there would be no high-traffic generators permitted in the retail use.
But I never saw that on this.
We didn't use the name Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts.
I was looking for high traffic.
But that's, that's who it's targeted against.
Thank you.
So in terms of those numbers, I mean, if you, if you look at table three, the retail space is by far the, the most active generator that we have on the site, you know, one is the largest. In terms of the traffic data that we use, the data set that we use, the industry standard, it includes all different types of retail in, in many different areas of the country, including the northeast, and so that's where we kind of, we, we estimate based on other developments of similar size and use have that trip generation. So that's, that's where those numbers come from.
But those do not include any high-traffic retail such as fast food?
Well, they, they can, because it, I mean, they're generalized as retail shopping centers, so it, it's possible that some of the counts had high turnover, so we're being conservative when we assume that.
I was going to say you're being conservative, because they're not, they're not going to be here.
Correct, and, yeah.
No way.
No, it's a restriction.
I mean, there's 16,000 square feet of retail. A Dunkin' Donuts is 2,500 square feet, and they generate a trip.
I'm just saying it's a use we would not permit.
I understand that, but he made a reference, it was included in these...
In his numbers, yeah.
In his numbers, but I'm saying it's, it's impossible... His numbers, but I'm saying it's, it's impossible with 16,000 foot of retail to only have 15 trips per hour. That's more like 15 trips per 10 minutes in a high-traffic retail.
You know this stuff.
Such as?
Right, and so.
Such as?
Well, I'm just saying, he says high-traffic retail is, was considered.
Right.
I'm saying there's no way it could be considered with such a low generation per hour in his table. There's only 15 cars.
Right.
Total, nine in and six out. In an hour.
Well, nine in and six out through the site?
Yeah.
Can I comment on that? Yeah.
Yeah, please.
So, for, for that, that's the peak hour of, that's the morning peak hour of commuter traffic.
Correct.
So, in terms of the site, if you, if you think of retail uses, shopping center uses that aren't Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts, they don't generate a lot of traffic in the morning peak hour. People aren't going to shop during that time period.
But you made a statement.
Mm-hmm.
That you said those uses were counted in this description ba- based on the manual.
Based on the manual, yeah.
It's a national data set that averages many different things in terms of retail use. So, it's possible that high turnover locations like that are included in this data set, and that's why we take many different shopping centers in many different areas and figure out the, the estimate that, that generates, the amount of traffic that generates. And that's what, that's what applies here.
But I wa- I want to make sure Beta real, real, real reviews that.
They reviewed our entire traffic report.
I'm just saying, it's only one vehicle in and out per thousand square foot, not including employees.
Well, that, I would, I would argue that that was probably mostly employees' traffic at that, that, that time of day. If you, if you have a retail.
We'll go into another, I'll go midday, what do we got?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty, so you're.
Correct, it's, it's jumping up a lot as, as the retail centers will be open during the daytime and the nighttime peak periods, and on Saturday midday jumps to 77, so.
So, we.
It is distributed in the data. It is a national data set that all traffic engineers use.
All right, um.
So, so the big conflict based on this report is Saturday, midday?
Correct, and that's why we, that's why we looked at these four peak hours, because we knew that there's a lot of Saturday peak traffic and there's a lot of weekday peak traffic. And that, and that's why we're proposing the improvements that we're, we're proposing.
Okay.
So, we want to switch to the improvements now, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, at the last hearing, we went over two different options, one to revise the pedestrian phasing from exclusive, where you push the button and everyone gets to walk, to concurrent where they're crossing concurrently with, uh, uh, parallel traffic. And option two, took that, that and added a southbound advance, so adding the ability for Sheep Hill Road traffic to exit before Lockwood Lane starts, which gives them a little bit extra head start. Um, as, as detailed in our, uh, response on December 2nd, uh, we did review the widening, uh, of Sheep Hill Road to include a left turn lane, but that does not, uh, in- improve traffic operations as significantly from the existing and background conditions when compared to these two options. Uh, the widening provides additional storage for vehicles, uh, to queue on Sheep Hill, but without significant, significant more time for those vehicles to leave Sheep Hill, there's really no, no, uh, significant improvement, and the queued vehicles will have a potential to spill back into the neighborhood past Apache Place. Uh, so, uh, as we discussed last hearing.
Did you analyze it with both, widening and changing the timing?
Correct. Oh, uh, widening and, uh, we did not do, and we haven't presented to you the widening and changing the timing. Uh, the issue with the widening is that there are significant utility, private property, and traffic signal impacts of doing that widening, uh, some of which is not under, uh, the property's control. So, if you, we, we created this figure here, so in your package C 1.101, uh, the areas highlighted in red show the areas impacting the private property along here. And as I said, with the two different options that we proposed with the re-timing, we had a significant improvement in lo- in operation, so if, if we, i- if you have table four and five from our previous, uh, November 21st, uh, analysis, we're going from level service Es and Fs during the, the peak hours on Sheep Hill to level service C and D, depending on which option you want to look at. Uh, so, in the morning peak hour, reductions in average delay per vehicle in seconds of anywhere from 17 to 38 seconds. The weekday midday from 19 to 40 seconds. The weekday afternoon, well over two minutes in both options, and the Saturday midday of, uh, 50 seconds or, or 60 seconds, depending on which option we presented. So, that's, that's a significant improvement, and.
So, so, just understand, the 60 extra cars coming out at midday on Saturday.
Well, that's 60 cars total, so they're not all coming out.
Well, based on your percentage.
We can bring back that number. That is 31.
31 exiting.
Mm-hmm, so half that, half that trips, which, which makes sense, in and out for retail.
So, roughly 20 are going to come out the Sheep Hill exit?
Correct.
You're saying those 20 cars only cause that time to go up 10 more seconds?
Uh, that doesn't cause them to go up at, with, yeah, we'd cause it, we, with the improvements we're proposing.
I'm just saying, you do the improvements without a development.
Correct.
That traffic time would go from what it is now.
Mm-hmm.
To what you just said, 50 seconds?
No, that included the site traffic, so.
I'm asking what your analyst, pre-site traffic, what does the timing do to the counts?
Well, that, that's not really how we analyze it, we analyze existing, we analyze background.
But exist, but you're.
Then we add what we put in, then we add what the, the site generates, and then we look at the impacts to try to see, okay, where's our greatest impact? What can we do to improve the operations? So, we don't take the existing traffic and, and prove it, I mean, that, that wouldn't make sense, it, we're, we're proposing improvements with a future condition. So, we don't have what that improvement would be on the existing conditions, I mean, we can certainly provide that, but it really wouldn't.
Well, I, I.
It really wouldn't be, make sense if we're proposing this development.
But I think the neighbors want to understand two things. One is, you're saying there's going to be roughly 20 cars coming out on Sheep's Hill on Saturday during a peak traffic time. You are proposing a timing change and dealing with the pedestrians. That timing change affects what's happening now.
I thought it was more than just the pedestrians, I thought there were two things you were dealing with on the timing.
Right, so it's not only.
The pedestrian phasing, but then there was also lengthening the time of the left turn.
Correct, so, with, with the balance of traffic, if you, if you add more traffic to an approach, depending on how much traffic's on East Putnam Avenue, when you add traffic to Sheep Hill, Hill Road, i- it, it tries to pull the time in the correct direction to, to maximize the operation, so. The 20 more trips, you know, when we add those trips to, to the network with the improvements, i- it's taking some of that time, some of that additional pedestrian time that we can now reallocate and still allow pedestrian movements going across the intersection. So, that, that's, that's adding 20, 22 seconds to the vehicul- vehicular movements, uh, out of 110-second cycle, 112-second cycle, so that's a significant increase in the capacity. But you are correct that if we did that to the existing conditions today, it would also have an improvement in capacity.
Right, and so, what I'm trying to understand, how much is the development going to impact service after this change has been done? You're, you're, you're doing a change and saying the level of service is going down.
No, but they presented last time, because when you get into an F category, F can be from whatever it is, 40 seconds up to. 80 seconds up to whatever. And you presented information, I thought, that took the F condition, which was 80, which in its worst time is like 184.
183, correct, yep.
Missed it by one. So, the existing bad condition is today 183, right?
Right, so, so if we did nothing, if we did nothing right, right now, and in two years, it's going to be 183 seconds.
Right.
Of delay for those people.
Okay. If you put in the development and you make the signal changes.
Right.
That came down to 60, or came down immeasurably.
47 or 45.
That one. So, it's an 10, I mean, it's a huge improvement.
A huge improvement, it's, I mean, it, like I said, in 110-second cycle, we're adding 22 seconds of extra time for vehicles, which is a large percentage.
So, from the worst of the worst on Saturday.
Right.
Right?
That was, that was actually the weekday afternoon peak.
Well, okay.
So, the weekday afternoon peak has a, has a lot of traffic on East Putnam, which causes issues on Sheep Hill. Um, but if we look at the Saturday peak, it's 106.5, going down to 37 or 45, depending on which option.
Right.
And that includes the site traffic.
So, that's huge.
And the reason that we don't do the analysis of what would happen without this development and the traffic improvements occurs, because the traffic improvements are occurring because my client is paying for them to happen. Uh, and otherwise, they don't, so, uh, that's why we're looking at the impact that occurs with this development taken into account and the traffic improvements.
So, in essence, the, the, most people would think if you're putting more traffic into it, it's going to get worse. The reality is counterintuitive, because you're putting more traffic into it, but you're changing the signalization, which improves it and makes it better.
That is correct.
Is that, is that a summary?
That is a summary, that is correct, yep.
It's not as backed up the traffic, right, but there's more cars that are going.
But it doesn't make any difference, the thing that people, they don't care if 50 cars go through that intersection or 20, it's how long it takes them to go through the intersection. But so, what I'm, what, what they're saying is, the worst time on a, you said it was midday, not weekend, but I thought it was weekend, but, the, the worst time was 100 and, and, oh, God, not.
183 seconds, that's the weekday afternoon, so you have to take into account all the different approaches.
Apples to apples.
You're right.
Same timeframe, weekday, not weekday afternoon, development's built, signals are changed, reprogrammed.
Right.
It now goes down to, what'd you say, 46, what, for?
Yeah, 45 or 47, depending on which option.
So, it's an, I mean, that's a huge improvement.
It's a huge improvement.
The wait times.
Those are the wait times, so that's why we look at, uh, to your point, with the additional vehicles, that's why we look at an average per vehicle, because it's really, uh, the, the congestion and the toler- tolerance of the public is, how long do I have to wait when I get to that light?
Unless they live there.
Say that again?
Unless they live there.
Right, well, no, well, I mean, that's the most important thing, is it, is if you live in the neighborhood and you want to get out of your development, right now, if we do nothing, it's going to be 183 seconds on average.
But, and the other interesting point is that even given all of those improvements on the Sheep Hill side, there's not a major negative impact across the intersection on Lockwood.
Or on East Putnam Avenue for that matter.
That's the good news, right.
Or even on East Putnam Avenue for that matter as well.
All right, that's the good news.
Craig, why don't you go through the rest of the supplemental information?
Okay, just to, just to kind of summarize on the, summarize on these improvements, uh, the town's traffic consultant reviewed all of our materials and submitted a letter on November 28th agreeing with, uh, analyses and, and improvement options presented. Uh, and it was stated at the pre-hearing meeting yesterday that both the DPW and the town's traffic consultant have no objections to the preliminary site approval, uh, so.
So, I think it's important that we all understand, but also that the public understand, that the, your calculations have been reviewed by Beta, who is the, the traffic consultant of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Correct.
And also DPW, who is now, so two independent bodies, if you will, have reviewed your calculations and agree with them, is that correct?
That is correct.
But, but I would just make one little caveat, which is that DPW, um, their, their comments have said, proceed, um, you know, resubmit to final.
Oh, no, but they're giving us, they're telling us that if this is a preliminary, we can proceed into final, so I would assume.
Right.
That means they're grand scope, they're okay with it.
They, they want, they, they want the applicant to work with DPW on the traffic signal revisions as opposed to specifically stating that the, the left advance is the solution. It looks good, but they, they want to.
For now.
For now.
For now.
Exactly, right.
It is a preliminary.
Right.
So, we know that if this goes into final, there will be additional work being done between the applicant and DPW and Beta.
Correct. Yes, that's a great, that's a good way of putting it.
Thank you.
And, and eventually the state, yeah, once the local approvals are secured. Okay, so there was, there was two more other items, uh, that were mentioned at the pre-hearing meeting that, that we wanted to discuss. Uh, one was looking at the two lots unmerged and developing them at 0.9 floor area ratio, so in that case, there's a site towards the back, towards the rear, rear of the property, let me just change the site plan here. So, in this area here, the property line is approximately in this area.
Yes.
A parcel in the back, a parcel in the front. So, in terms of the site-generated traffic, if we assume that it's a mixed use of, of similar mixes as to the combined, the site-generated traffic wouldn't change, it's just that half of the volume would be on the northern site, as we can call it, and half of it would be on the southern site. Uh, but would change, what would change is the, of the site access points. So, the north site would only be able to be accessed in a driveway in a similar location to where the ones proposed now to the north. And the one to the south would likely have an access along East Putnam Avenue, and they would also probably request, uh, a site access on Sheep Hill as, as well in order to take advantage of the signal. So, if you look at the trip distribution percentages that we have in our traffic report on figure 10, uh, we say that 65% of the traffic enters via the East Putnam Avenue driveway, because it's on the main road and most of the traffic's coming from there. And that 65% of the traffic exits via Sheep Hill Road, as we were just discussing, to come out at the light. So, if you were to have two driveways on Sheep Hill and only one site was able to access the East Putnam Avenue driveway, you'd have more traffic both northbound and southbound on Sheep Hill Road. Um, and by co- combining the two developments, you have a single access point on Sheep Hill, uh, allowing vehicles to use both driveways. Uh, if, if you're in the rear of the site, you can still exit out of the East Putnam Avenue driveway as well. Uh, so, unless there's questions, I can move on to the next issue.
Well, just, to simplify it, right now, there's two separate lots.
Correct.
Which are being merged to create the, the proposal before us.
That's right.
If they did not merge.
Correct.
The zoning on that, uh, lot to the north still is an LB zone.
Correct.
So, it's funny shape to the LB zone, but anyway, it, it's a separate lot in the LB zone, and it could also, if it were developed with the same metrics, as you say.
Correct.
Housing and, and, and office and detail. And it is the larger of the two properties.
Correct.
So, there would be more tr- I mean, there's no way to get to that north property except through Sheep Hill.
That's correct, yeah.
In other words, you can't use East Putt at all.
Right, you can't get, you can't have the advantage of having that driveway on the main roadway. And then that's why the consolidation assists in that you have, you have some traffic that can access the light for left turns and a lot of the traffic can use East Putnam Avenue if they see fit.
I, I'm just curious, if, if it was developed as two separate sites, in your opinion, would the traffic impact on Sheep Hill be better, worse, or the same?
It would be, it would be worse, because there'd be more traffic coming in northbound on Sheep Hill to get to that rear driveway, as well as accessing the driveway for the south parcel. And then also coming out, exiting at the light, you know, 50% of the traffic now has to come out of that rear parcel and come out at Sheep Hill, and then adding another 65% of the traffic from the front, so 65% of the 50%, and coming out that way.
But, but assuming, assuming, again, for assumptions, assume that there was no other access to Sheep Hill from the front lot.
Mm-hmm.
Let's assume that the, the north lot.
Is the only, yep.
Can only use Sheep Hill. The south lot can only use East Putt.
Yep.
Because I think if you had, but whatever, I'm just sort of curious.
So, if, if that's the case, it would be a little bit better along Sheep Hill, because you'd have 15% less traffic.
Than?
Than the combined proposal. Because you would take all the trips that would want to go to the front lot and come in the East Putnam Avenue driveway, in and out. The percentages are, you know, it's kind of hard to explain the percentages, but you, you can imagine as two separate sites, 50% of the trip, trips going to each site. And if no. And if no, no one can go out of the southern parcel onto Sheep Hill, they all have to use East Putnam Avenue. It's obviously gonna be better than the combined proposal on, on Sheep Hill because you, you don't have that extra driveway. You can't get from that front parcel out that way. But, but I think having both combined allows you to have those options. So, if, if people want to avoid Sheep Hill altogether, they can come in the East Putnam Avenue driveway. If, if they, if they see some capacity on Sheep Hill with the improvements, I, I believe that they will, they can utilize the intersection.
Any other questions from the commission? Did you have anything else that you wanted to present to us?
No, as long as you have no other questions, I'm, I'm good.
I do, before, before you're closing, right?
No, we're not closing. I'm just, if we're done, then we ask for public comment.
I, I do have one question, Mr. Hagerty may be able to answer this. Since this is one of our first moderate-income projects, and I understand you did submit a plan, I haven't had a chance to read it, but I was going through it, can you just kind of summarize your understanding of what that means, how that actually is gonna work on this project in terms of making sure that those four units are moderate income? We haven't dealt with a lot of this, right? This is a new regulation. So, I was just wondering if you could kind of summarize your understanding of how it might work.
Sure. The, there's a formula built into the regulation that you adopted, and it's similar to how the, the formula is for the affordable housing under the state statute, that there's a percentage of income. Here, we use a, a percentage of the income or the median income of the town municipal employees. And I believe the number is approximately $77,000 for this year. And you take 2% of that, and that can be the income that is used per month for the, for the apartment rent, which comes out to be roughly about $1,500 of rent that that income, that that apartment rents for.
And these are envisioned to be rental units, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, these will all be rentals. There's another formula, obviously, for, for sale and, and also for resale.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with the regulations. I was just curious about how you envision this actually working in the sense of, when an applicant comes to you, and I, whoever the property manager is at this point in time, you take an application for the rental at that point in time.
Correct.
Then compared to the town, let us, I have a list, go ahead.
The first thing they would have to do is show where they're employed, because there's also a ranking. First, it's town employees, then it's employees for nonprofits, and.
Then other residents of the town and then other people, right.
I doubt if it would ever get that low because of the demand that would be out there. This is geared towards our teachers and our firefighters and our, our, our police force.
Is that gonna be part of the marketing program of the project?
Yes, and in fact, there has to be a marketing program as part of it. And that has to include notices in the Greenwich Time, reaching out to various organizations in town that would, Board of Ed, the unions, so that everyone who would have certainly the first two priorities would know that it's out there and available. And each of the people applying would have to verify their income in order to be eligible to rent that apartment.
Just a question, do they do all this? Do they do all, the administration, then come to the town? Because the town maintains a list of eligible properties and eligible applicants, right? They're bringing the information from the applicant?
Right, we have a community development office, and the director of that office verifies and double checks, but it's, the onus is on the property management and on the applicant, so to speak, to, to, to do the majority of the work, and then the community development office verifies that. So, you would have to have a management office, so to speak, and a point of contact, and there's an annual affidavit that has to be filed stating that everything's still in compliance. So, there's a, there's a whole checks and balance system.
Right, so you have to, I was gonna add, just as Katie said, you have to verify it each year, even after the tenants are, are approved, that they in fact qualify. Very similar to what the Housing Authority does with its housing units to make sure that people who are there are, are eligible.
The property managers set up to do that? They're confident they can do that without any current issues?
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
Any more, commission? Any public comment?
Good evening. My name is Nancy Nania. My family and I own properties 12, 14, and 16 Sheep Hill Road. Where do I begin? Sheep Hill Road will not be the only street affected by exiting out onto Sheep Hill. When cars exit onto Sheep Hill, they will not be able to make a left turn. I know this because cars are backed up from the traffic light to my home, which makes it difficult for me to exit my driveway. Outgoing cars will then be making a left onto Thorn Hill and a left onto Riverside Lane, and they will go across to Apache Place. I am very concerned for the safety of our children. There is a school bus at Apache Place. I am worried about the safety of pedestrians. Another concern of safety I have for my children is our driveway. Throughout the day, our driveway is used as a churn-around. There is an exit onto Sheep Hill. Our driveway will have more cars entering and exiting to try to get to the traffic light. Currently, there are only three parking spaces exiting from the East Putnam property. Once built, I think they said 144 spaces, something like that. In October 2008, Joseph Barcillo was killed on this busy street. My father, while walking on Sheep Hill, was hit by a car. Now, Sheep Hill Road is like a raceway. Putting an exit onto Sheep Hill will make Sheep Hill Road feel like a throughway. What will the developer do to ensure safety for Sheep Hill Road? What safety measures will the builder be doing before and during construction? This construction will take at least two years, but probably a lot longer. There will be many trucks going in and out of our street. Trucks will be exiting right across the street from the bus stop. I know from experience of building our home, my husband and I hired a police officer to direct traffic. Will the builder provide this? I am hoping that the builders will follow building zoning laws. I am worried about the height of the building. What will happen if there's a problem digging? Will this make the structure height higher? I ask because when we built our home, we were only allowed to build our roof so high. We don't, also would like another traffic study. We were told it was in February 2016. Was this checked at the beginning of Sheep Hill Road from Post Road? Because I do not remember seeing a traffic counter at the end of the street. Was the traffic counter placed at Apache Place, Thorn Hill, and Riverside Lane? It should have been because all these streets will be affected. I am also concerned that the builder will want to change zoning laws for their own properties. They own five Sheep Hill and 11 Sheep Hill also. If this goes through, what is to stop him? My family owning three properties on Sheep Hill is directly impacted by this project. I would hate to have to churn around and sell my properties that my parents, my husband and I worked so hard for. But if I have to because of this project and my concern for my family's well-being, then what can my zoning be changed to? What will I be able to do since he is allowed to do all this? For those of us that live on Sheep Hill Road, our houses are more than houses. They are our homes, and in our homes are our families that we would like to keep safe. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joan Knutson. I live at 1 Spazano Drive, close to the development. I'm gonna stand here tonight and repeat myself because that's all I've been hearing, because no significant changes have been made to change the nature and the scope of this project. There was a change to the exit and entrance onto Sheep Hill Road, but it's still directly across from Apache Place. When you can't make that turn because the light's backed up, it'll go directly across the street, up Apache, around through Spazano Drive. As it stands now, a fire truck can't get through Spazano Drive because it's so congested. A number of cars are parked on Apache during the day from nearby businesses, which, most of which are from, already from this property. I realize it's a public road, they can park where they want, but it's extremely congested. Mr. Hagney's asking for a waiver of prohibition. It's just another way of getting around the fact that this building should be asking for a variance. But wait, that variance was denied under a different application in 2013. The regulations currently prohibit entrances and exits for businesses located opposite residential zones, Section 6737. There was a conscious decision made at one time to include this provision in the regulations, and its reasons are obvious. Such a use can obliterate the residential character of the surrounding area. This type of proposal should be addressed through a variance application, granted only when unique circumstances exist, not to change the regulations and ask for waivers. You're gonna change a traffic signal to accommodate this project, yet that traffic signal should be changed now because of the flow of traffic there. Once this project is up, it'll just be back to square one. Seventeen apartments, 140 parking spaces, two cars per unit is 34 cars. You can tell me they're one-bedroom apartments, low, moderate, high income, doesn't make a difference to me. They are only putting the required amount of low, moderate in to achieve the square footage that they want to make this building overwhelming. Rent to who you wish, but I am a landlord for numerous apartments in this town, and I can tell you, when there's one person, there's two; when there's two, there's four. You can do that, and you can't do anything about it. With four, that's 68 cars going in and out of the development. Not to mention, which they didn't in their traffic study, which I saw, that was emailed me today, 12 to 13 large trucks will be going in and out of that property. 12 to 13. Now, when they can't make that left-hand turn onto Sheep Hill Road to go to the light, where are they gonna go? Right up Apache Place. You did a national data study. National data. That has nothing to do with us. This is Greenwich, Connecticut, not national. We, as neighbors, have a right to rely on the existing regulations. You've allowed buildings and businesses to be built in this town, and one that does come to mind, as you have said, Starbucks, Cosco. Now it's up, it's too late. Cars are parked on the road waiting to get in there because there's no parking there. You've backed up all of Cosco, and now it's too late to do anything about it. I don't want that to happen here. In 2013, the applicant filed an application for the development of this site, which was denied. It may have been under a different application number, but it was basically the same project. Why was it denied? Because it was too big and too intense for this site, and it required variances. The purpose of the zoning regulations is to provide a blueprint for land use, development with the underlying objective of promoting the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Zoning regulations protect property values and property rights and are intended to be relied upon. They are intended to protect the community as a whole. The regulations for the LB zone were adopted for a purpose of finding a balance in transition between the residential and commercial zones, and the applicant is intending to run over these protective provisions. The residential neighbors have a right to rely upon the regulations and see that this property developed as intended. The neighbors have a right to rely on you, the zoning board, not to only listen to us, but to please hear us. The applicant has every right to develop this property, but in accordance with the regulations. If a unique set of circumstances exists, then the applicant can apply for a variance. I'm objecting to this proposed development as it is, and ask that the board ensure that this parcel be developed in accordance with the regulations. In my hand, I have 110 signatures of petition asking you guys to please hear us and not let this go through.
Mrs. Knutson?
Yes.
You're saying that when the traffic on Sheep Hill, southbound.
That's the petition.
When the traffic on Sheep Hill, southbound, is backed up, people make a right on Riverside?
What I'm, what I'm saying to you is, when there, this new development that they're proposing, that entrance and exit is right across from Apache Place.
Right, got that.
When they can't come out because it's, traffic is backed up, or there's too many cars going down Sheep Hill Road, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go directly across the street to Apache Place.
Okay, but what I'm asking you, and, and I misunderstood you guys.
Okay.
Because I think the other lady said it, but.
I could've said it.
When you, what I'm trying to understand is, when traffic is southbound on Sheep Hill and it's backed up at the signal, do people then turn on either Riverside Lane or Thorn Hill and come down Spazano and out Apache?
Sometimes they, sometimes they avoid it altogether.
Okay, so they will loop through, what you're saying is if there's traffic backed up at the Sheep Hill light, that people will come through.
They'll come through on Apache and go around and go to Riverside Lane if they're going that way.
Or turn right on Thorn Hill if they're southbound, come through Spazano and out Apache.
Yes.
So, what you're saying is that the traffic then looks to find a way around.
It does. I try to find a way around because it's.
We all do it, it's human nature, right?
Yeah.
But I just wanted to understand how that worked.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing, she, the, the Starbucks was originally denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission, just so you know, you can't hold us responsible for that.
No, I'm not holding you responsible.
We denied it.
But I'm just saying, this is, this is what happens, and then it happens, and then.
But we said no, just so you know.
And then we can't do anything about it.
It was a settlement, a court settlement, is how that ended up.
So, you know, we did, another commission long ago made a big effort.
I get it, but I just don't want it to be too late for this.
Mr. Maitland made a big effort.
Hi, good evening. Marina Pennell, I live at 12 Apache. Allowing the applicant to change the property at 5 Sheep Hill Road from residential to commercial will be detriment, detrimental to the neighborhood. As you can see from the submitted photos, parking on Apache Place is already down to a single lane every day.
Excuse me for one minute.
Yes.
I, I think there's some misconceptions here. Is 5 Sheep Hill Lane the north part of this property? There's two lots involved.
Through the, the back, yeah, I'm assuming that's what it is.
The zoning on that property is not changing. It's an LB zone now, it's going to be an LB zone in the future.
Right.
So, the zoning is not changing.
Okay, okay, but that's where the apartments are gonna go, correct?
The apartments are gonna go on the top of the building, which is kind of centered in this, uh, parcel where two lots have merged.
Okay, that's not what I understood from the.
That's why we were talking earlier in the traffic about what happens.
I don't wanna waste your time, so let me just read this so we could get, because I know you wanna go home.
I really would like to say this so that the record is correct, because I, I usually don't like to interrupt people when they're talking, but I, there have been several misstatements made earlier, and I, I think I reached my limit, but sorry.
It's probably my interpretation of the agenda. Okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, Apache Place is already overcrowded because there is a Mexican restaurant which the zoning allowed to expand from a mom-and-pop grocery to a seven-day-a-week, 18-hour-a-day business. The traffic and garbage from this business have significantly destroyed the atmosphere of Apache Place and Spazano Drive. Cars and trucks are constantly turning around or blocking the neighbors' driveways, even though there are two large no-U-turn signs which are posted. The intersection of Apache and Spazano is a blind corner. Vehicles fly up and around without slowing down since there's no posted speed limit or a bump. As mentioned before, the businesses from Route 1 park on Apache and Spazano so they can allow parking for their clients. When the J-House has a function, attendees park on our streets. The congestion of these two, on these two streets hinders the quality of the, life of the residents. Number two, in an access, if an access is allowed onto Sheep Hill Road, this will prevent vehicles, what will prevent vehicles from churning into the proposed property and trying to beat the light to get onto Sheep Hill Road? An example is where drivers cut through from Riverside Lane at Balducci's to go west on Route 1. Any attempt to adjust the timing of the lights won't stop the drivers from doing this. And as we noted last week, the drivers do not obey posted signs. And another fear is that the delivery driver to the Mexican restaurant will attempt to get back to their delivery fa, to their store faster and cut through the parking lot. With an exit opposite Apache, drivers will cross directly from Sheep, on, I'm sorry, on Sheep Hill Road, they'll route, cross up Apache to avoid the light, to wait at the light at Route 1, and they'll travel, as mentioned before, on Thorn Hill or Riverside Lane. I really think that the board needs to visit. I really think that the board needs to visit during the day to see, because we live there and we know what it's like already, and it's really a problem. Thank you.
Greg McGoughlin, I live on 29 Spazano Drive, and I'm not going to reiterate the prepared statements, I think they covered it really well. There was one thing that I heard that I wanted to maybe correct a little bit. I heard a statement that the residents were not concerned about volume of traffic and only concerned about the timing of the traffic, and I would say that that's not exactly true, because with greater volume of traffic comes a greater chance of accident and, and safety concerns. I think maybe the biggest concern is safety because of the fact that it's a, a bus stop for seven, eight, nine, 10-year-olds, and you've got left turns coming from the mobile station at the same time that right turns are coming in from the post road. Now you're going to add new left turns coming in from the parking lot, so you've got a left turn, and a left turn, and a right turn, all converging at the same time, which is a greater opportunity for accident regardless of timing of lights. Uh, I think safety is as big a concern as anything else, and we, I'd want to make sure that the board was very focused on that part of it. So, thank you.
Evening. For the record, Paul Chiappetta, 21 Sheep Hill Road. I'm not going to bore you with beating it to death again. I think my neighbors did a great job doing that. They speak their mind, and they're passionate about it because it is a crowded neighborhood, and it could get worse. The impact that we foresee with a building this size is going to make it much worse. But one thing that I would like to ask the board, maybe they can ask the, the staff, the team here, for the owner, you talked about the moderate-income housing, and that's something new to all of us here. They have to put a package together that's going to actively target municipal workers. Now I'm assuming they're talking about firefighters, police, EMS, nurses, hospitals? I would think, I would think so, in that $77,000 bracket. Let's think about this for a second. How about DPW workers? Yeah, definitely, right?
Yep.
Okay? Shift workers, emergency service workers, okay? Think about that. Snowstorm bangs in, guys will be home until 6, 7, 8 o'clock at night, then they'll start leaving to go to their shift work, maybe come back at 5 o'clock in the morning, maybe the fire department shift might, extra shifts might go out. Nurses will be leaving for shift work at midnight to start their shift. Kind of changes the dynamic of the whole study. The national study right now goes out the window. That's based on average Joes. That's based on your regular, average, everyday worker. If we're going to actively go out and put a package together and seek out municipal workers, or somebody in the $77,000 tax bracket that works for the TOG, City of Stanford, be it wherever, okay? We're going to go actively seeking them, then we need to rethink the way we look at the study. It's a different animal altogether. I served 35 years in the fire service, 11 years as fire chief, Sound Beach Fire Department, responsible for that district, Sheep Hill Road. I know the congestion, I've seen the accidents out there, I've been to the accidents, I've been involved in the accidents out there. I know what it's like to make a left-hand turn onto the post road from that side of the post road. It's not going to happen. The impact is too great. You heard me say it here before, can't happen, impact in a neighborhood is too much. But think about the question that I posed to the board about having the municipal workers and targeting that type of people, or those type of persons, those great people that get out and slug it out every day for our benefit, our health, our safety. Think about those people, rethink the study. It's not average Joes we're talking about. Thank you for hearing me.
Mr. Chiappetta? Mr. Chiappetta, thank you for your comments, but I did have one observation, is that there will be four moderate-income units, and it's not the entire rental spaces that will be moderate-income units.
Thank you for clarifying that, and I was kind of thinking it was going to be the whole package, but I think if you're going to go actively seeking them, there are people that work on the lower end of the spectrum in the municipalities also, so it wouldn't be modern, moderate, it would be low-income, and then, of course, there's people that work on the high end of the spectrum that we'd be actively searching out in the market value also. Am I correct in saying that?
Well...
We don't know.
We don't know yet, so we don't understand it enough. So I think we need to go back, and we need to understand, from the state's point of view, what moderate-income housing means, what it means to municipal workers in the town of Greenwich. I think it's a wonderful thing for municipal workers to have something like this, but not at a 17-unit scale on the corner of Sheep Hill Road.
We just told you it's a four-unit scale.
But the, the entire project. You want to leave it as four moderate-income units? We're real happy with that. That's fine with me, that works.
There's 17 units, four of them are moderate.
Well, you want to make it just four, we're fine with that.
Well, there was an iteration...
We'll give up at that point.
There was an iteration that looked kind of like that.
You know, another thing that really needs to be said to clear the air, I think if, if, if staff wants to sit with the neighbors and wants to sit with staff here, I think we can come to an agreement rather than sitting here and taking up a lot of our time. Let's keep that in mind also. Thank you.
Okay, we didn't want to tell the folks. You didn't want to tell the folks. It's our decision. Okay. I don't think he was persuadable. No, I don't.
Hi, my name's Wendy Walsh, and my neighbor, Ed Scandalounis, came to me this, this afternoon and asked me to come and read a letter for him. I'm opposed to this project, for all the reasons that my neighbors have stated. Okay, so...
Sorry, did you give your address?
18 Sheep Hill Road.
Thank you. I missed, I guess.
I thought it was obvious. You're all from here.
I know where you're from, I just didn't...
All right.
For the record, this is a public record, that's...
This is my first time, thank you, sorry. This is a letter from my elderly neighbor, Edward Scandalounis. He was unable to attend because he takes care of his wife. He lives at 20 Sheep Hill Road. I've lived, I've lived on Sheep Hill Road for over 65 years. In that time, I've seen a number of changes, some good, some not so good. Good being sidewalks, not so good elimination of front home-street parking. I guess they took away the parking spaces on our road, which makes sort of sense because it's such a busy road. But the proposed structure for housing and business being considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission is probably the most ill-conceived and inappropriate change to date. Sheep Hill Road is a major corridor for traffic to and from North Myanis and beyond. Although there are others from North Myanis, Sheep Hill Road is the major access to and from the post road, throughway, and schools directly south of Sheep Hill Road. At present, throughout the day, but particularly when parents are taking children to school or heading to work, the line of vehicles extends in front of at least eight homes waiting for the light to change. Add to this the vehicles exiting or attempting to enter the mobile gas station on Sheep Hill Road. Try getting out of your driveway. Secondly, but extremely important, the contempt for the 25 mile-per-hour speed limit equals more traffic, more speed. Any amendment to zoning regulations as proposed by J&amp;J Company and approved by the Town Planning and Zoning Commission would be setting a precedent and would open the floodgates for future attacks on resident, on the residential spirit of the town of Greenwich. I'm all for the growth of business within the town, but not at the expense of fixed residential neighborhoods. With that being said, my neighbors and I are asking the commission to maintain the rulings that have kept Greenwich residential areas sacred from infringement by developers with grand plans. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just pass it down. Thank you, too.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Koyde Gorman. I am the owner and a resident at 17 Sheep Hill Road. My husband Jonathan and I live there with our four-year-old son. Unlike some of my neighbors who've already spoken, we're a little bit new to the neighborhood. We have only been there about five and a half years, but obviously, it's the home that my son was born into. The reason that we bought the house was because the neighborhood was lovely. There was extremely convenient access to the post road and all of the amenities available there, while the homes and the, the neighbors were extremely peaceful and welcoming. The first guest that I had to my house was a coworker of mine, and he remarked to me, "Wow, you bought a house in the perfect neighborhood. You have such direct access, convenience to 95." I work in the city, so I, I need access to the train. That was also appealing. But, from your home, you would almost never know that everything is right there. This is a terrific town, you made a great decision. Mind you, we bought the house after looking for two years in the Fairfield area, Fairfield County area, including Darien. Greenwich was not our first choice, but when this house became available and we saw all of the appeal of the neighborhood, it wasn't something that we could turn down. As I said, my son is four years old, he will start to ride a bike soon, he will start to be gaining a little bit of independence, maybe want to walk to McDonald's, which is not too far, maybe go to a friend's house on his own. Obviously not yet, but there will be a time when he's going to do that. We currently take great advantage of the neighborhood. My husband and I run, we run with our son in the stroller. We know what it's like to come to intersections where traffic is dangerous. And it will only become more dangerous if this project is approved, if this application is approved. So like I said, unlike some of my neighbors who've been there for generations, we haven't been there that long, but we can tell you that the appeal of the neighborhood certainly will not be the same. If I could draw attention to the, the basic purposes of the, the building zone regulations, I can identify at least four that this application does not support, or does actually fall contrary to. Number one, promoting the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. I can't see how that is supported, and I do see how it is in direct contravention.
6-1.
Number two, lessening congestion in the streets. That obviously wouldn't be supported. They, they have some perhaps impressive traffic studies, but... Yes, Section 6-1, excuse me. The traffic studies show that perhaps the flow of traffic could improve, but the volume of traffic will severely increase. There will be congestion, and I don't think that we are prepared to know that congestion will be the same, or limited, or, or increased, we just don't know. Number seven, conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. Is this really the most appropriate use of this land? I, I can't answer that question, but I do fear for the value of my property. Conserving the value of the buildings. I'm sorry, I'm just repeating myself at this point, but number 10, regulating and limiting the height and bulk of buildings hereafter erected. I certainly think that the, the height and the bulk of the properties that are currently on-site now would be increased. So, those, like I said, are, are just four of the purposes of the building zone regulations that would not be served by this project going through. I think the, I thank the commission for giving us this opportunity, and I hope that you'll really consider the impact on, on us, the neighbors, the people who live there. If I could just give one more concrete example of daily life, someone mentioned the, the traffic coming from the mobile gas station, which is just across the street. If you need to turn into or out of that while there are cars on Sheep Hill Road, that area is already very tight. To increase the number of turning points from, in that immediate area, I just think would be, it, it would be a disaster for us. I promise this is my last illustration, but I'm going to refer to my four-year-old again. One of the activities that we have on a Saturday morning or afternoon, I won't use his name, but, "Son, can you look out the window and tell me the cars that you see?" Because we're at some point up, you know, he knows his colors now, but about a year ago, he was learning colors. "What, what are the colors of the cars that you see?" The reason that he could identify the color of the cars was because they were backed up all the way to our house. So all he needed to do was stand in the window and tell me, "Mommy, I see a red truck. I see a blue car. Daddy has a blue car." I digress, but anyway, that's, those are the, the real conditions that we live with. And I appreciate you listening to us, and I hope that you'll seriously consider what the people who, you know, live there and support the neighborhood currently are, are facing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Brad Steinberg, I live at 54 Riverside Lane, was there for over 23 years. I'd also like to compliment my neighbors for all of their comments. I'd like to observe that the presentation earlier of the traffic studies seemed exceptionally deficient in its addressing the overall traffic patterns within the community, or within the area of Sheep Hill Road and East Putnam Avenue. Living on Riverside Lane, I can tell you that it is a major cut-through for people who are coming from North Myanis, who want to avoid Sheep Hill. So obviously, as the traffic builds up along Sheep Hill, people will be using Riverside Lane. I think that the study should be conducted on the basis of actual traffic patterns in the town of Greenwich, and not a national study. I think that's a false example or a false study. I'm sure there are enough, excuse, there are enough locations within Greenwich that a study could be done of some type of a development, not necessarily having moderate-income housing, but to determine actual ingress and egress. These numbers seem exceptionally low. Moreover, anyone who travels during the day with school buses traveling up and down post road knows the, the amount of traffic that backs up, both on Putnam Avenue and Sheep Hill and Lockwood. Moreover, I don't even think this took into consideration any delays that may have occurred on 95, which forces traffic onto Putnam, which will cause further backups, and many of the things that were stated earlier regarding traffic, speed, et cetera, are absolutely critical to be considered by the commission in its consideration of this application. Understanding that the applicant has certain as-of-right procedures, you know, to develop the property, wonderful, but as to any variances, these should be completely denied and rejected. Let them build according to the existing code, let them do what they have to do to comply with that code, but let's try to maintain the safety of our community and the traffic in a way that will not be detrimental to all of the residents, both in the immediate vicinity of the area of Sheep Hill, Riverside, even taking Sound Beach Extension. All these roads will now become completely congested, backed up, and the quality of life in the town. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman and commission members, the, the concerns that I'm hearing are on traffic congestion, speed, parking in residential communities, some of those things we can address, some of those are really addressed by other town boards and can be addressed separate and apart from what's going on here. What has been very successful in a number of neighborhoods all around town has been residential-only parking, and the residents of that area have the ability to park there, and it limits the amount of parking that people who are working in the area can do. I have found it to be extremely effective in, in our neighborhood in Byram.
I, I have as well, but I believe that the parking director is not in support of adding any more of that at this time. I have had the same experience in my neighborhood, but from what I understand... I have had the same experience in my neighborhood, but from what I understand...
The current parking director, that's, that's not her first tool in the toolbox.
Well, and perhaps, though, she needs to look at that. And this is really the purview of the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen is the one that votes on putting up no parking signs as part of their duties in the town. The other concern about accidents as part of our traffic report, we did submit an accident study for a several-year period indicating that there were no serious concerns with accidents. These studies are done during peak times. And as Ms. DeAnis said, they take a two-hour period, and then they find out where the greatest activity is and the greatest amount of traffic, and they focus on that. Speed i- is also something that's a concern, and many neighborhoods have asked for speed bumps to control it in the neighborhood. The one I can think of most recently is Indian Field Road, I'm sorry, Valley Wood Road, which has a number of speed bumps on it to control speed. And, and that's, again, something that can be done separate and apart from what we are proposing here. The queuing i- is also a big concern, and, and that is, to a very extent, great extent, related directly with the, the signalization at Sheep Hill and East Putnam Avenue. And one of the, the tables that was submitted, Table Five, not only follows what the, the reduction in the time period of sitting at the light is, but also the reduction in the length of the queue. So that people who are trying to get out of their driveways, the queue would be reduced significantly. One of the speakers spoke about the, the standards of site plan and special permit to promote welfare of the community. One of the reasons this commission adopted this regulation a year and a half ago was to provide for new housing and new opportunities and to address the very stated need that moderate-income housing is needed in the town. This is a property that is located on a state highway, Route One. It is zoned LB or local business. The uses that we're proposing here are appropriate for this. They meet the, the regulation requirement for the business square footage that is permitted in the zone. And we're looking to add the housing a- as part of that to meet the, the requirements of the new regulation that you have adopted. We are proposing significant changes to the signalization, which would lessen the congestion in the neighborhood, not increase it. And we have also revised the plan to meet the three-and-a-half stories that is permitted. We had originally proposed to you four stories. However, we have redesigned the plan to meet the requirement of the zone as, for the regulation, excuse me, as you adopted it a, a year and a half ago. As I said, this has been adopted in, in response to the, the Plan of Conservation Development that was approved by the RTM in 2009, which promulgated to adopt a housing task force. The housing task force met for over a year. It came up with very specific recommendations. There was Community Development Partnership that came out of that task force. And from them, the proposal for this housing opportunity for moderate-income town workers. This is just what was thought about in terms of what the, the need was in town and what the regulation needed to provide. And we would ask you to approve it as submitted on a preliminary basis. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a, a couple other questions?
Sure.
Mr. Hegney, I, I was just curious. Is there anything else? It, it seems like a large part of the unknown here, to some extent, is that the improvements in the timing on the light, because you're going to lower the congestion. Is, is there anything you can think of that would help the public get comfortable that that actually is going to happen? Because you've heard the comments about national and what might happen. And I understand the timing, and I agree, it sounds like a very significant improvement. But I, I still think it leaves people, like, we're not sure that's going to work, kind of thing. For example, has this worked at another intersection in town? We have a lot of them with backups. Has it been done before, and does it work somewhere else in town? I'm just, that's just one. I'm, I'm looking for other ways to kind of make the public understand that this actually could work and lower the congestion. And yeah, you have to tackle many of the other problems you said separately. But if that doesn't work for one reason, the project becomes a, a huge problem for the neighborhood at this point in time. Or a bigger problem, I should say.
As Ms. DeAnis said in his presentation, this is done on a nationwide basis, where you take all of the studies and you combine them as an average to see what...
Okay, but that's, that's the in and out. I was talking about the timing improvements.
Perhaps Ms. DeAnis can give us some examples.
So just to comment on that real quick. This is something that the DPW is actually looking at, at all their intersections.
I, I read that, yeah.
Yeah, so they have a study, or actually more than a study. I think they're within the design phase, trying to move towards implementation, waiting on funding, to do this at several other locations.
And those locations are...
I don't have the exact list. I mean, we can get that for you if, if you request it.
I was, I was just going to say that they, I believe this has already been implemented in a couple of intersections within town. And, and you're absolutely right that they're, they're waiting for funding to, to do more of them. So I think that would be something that would be worth exploring.
Yes.
And it's also something that they do in several municipalities in, in Connecticut, New Haven, Stanford, Hartford to some extent. And also, obviously, New York City, you know, one of the congested, most congested areas in the country. And that's how they, they utilize the signal timing in order to move traffic and pedestrians as efficiently as possible. So it does work elsewhere, and that's why we're proposing it here.
And I think it, it's well within our continued study of this to look at what intersections have had this concurrent change made for the signalization and see how it has affected the, the timing of, and queuing within that, those intersections.
I think it might help.
We could certainly look at that and see the other studies that Public Works has done and see what information they have, as well as looking at, at other areas of the state.
Did they analyze, one of the other comments that was a common theme was that when the backup happens on Sheep's Hill, the rats go running everywhere else. And so have you looked at Sheep's Hill and Sound Beach? Have you looked at the other out, out locations from this area in terms of traffic counts?
When the traffic study, before it's even done, the traffic engineer discusses this with the planning and zoning staff and then with the town's traffic coordinator in Public Works. And those, and through those discussions, the intersections that would be impacted by the development of this site are listed, and those are the ones that are analyzed.
So, so the corner of Sound, Sound Beach and Sheep's Hill was analyzed?
I, I don't believe that that was one of the ones that was indicated as to be impacted by this particular site.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if the cars get stopped here, where else do they go? And how do we get a clear picture of what's happening? Because, you know, once they're there, they go other places.
So, so in terms of that, we, we do conduct several site visits during the study period to, to really figure out what's going on in the existing location. You know, I, I understand that there is a lot of cut-through traffic through the neighborhoods, particularly for people traveling southbound. And mainly, that's, in my opinion, tied to the operation of Sheep Hill Road. If we can improve that, that may limit the amount of traffic that travels with these other options. And not, not to mention that this site is residential and retail use directly on East Putnam Avenue. And 95 is adjacent to this intersection. It would be difficult for, for many people to justify going several, several times further around the neighborhood to get out of the site when you can go out and take a right on East Putnam Avenue or come out at the light, the signalized light, which we're trying to improve. So I don't dismiss the fact that, that vehicles may, may go around coming southbound into the neighborhood, but this site traffic, we've accounted for some going up Sheep Hill. But, you know, it's our opinion that on East Putnam Avenue, traffic is going to come from mainly that area.
Mrs. DeLuca, one of the things that, as the applicant goes forward, they're going to work with DPW on the advanced phasing for the southbound approach, and then they're going to look at either exclusive or concurrent pedestrian phasing at December. One. As they're doing all that, could they also evaluate with DPW enhanced safety measures for pedestrians? Look at the bus stop? And potentially whether some of those western side feeder streets, whether something should be one-way there? Whether that would make sense for, look at Riverside Lanes, Bizano, Apache? And again, also look at the resident-only parking. Maybe even speed bumps. But as they're working on this signaling issue together, could they look at overall safety measures, whether with the development going forward, there are additional safety measures that could be implemented?
There's definitely off-site impacts that can be looked at, but to a point. I mean, I'm, yeah, you can't go too far out.
Too far out, but if, for example, the bus stop gets raised on Apache.
That's absolutely something that, that can be looked at. The other thing is schoolchildren. One of the things I was going to ask is how many, how many pedestrians there were counted? Because there's the eastern school. So how many, if any, are walking across the Post Road? And, and what would the impact of concurrent versus non-concurrent pedestrian timing have on this, on the safety in those intersections for children walking across the street?
So we could ask that while they're working on the signalization and the, and the concurrent, the phasing of the light, whether they could look at enhanced safety or where safety might be impacted, pedestrian safety? I guess what you're saying is that they couldn't look at, should Apache be one-way?
I, I think it makes most sense to phrase it as for the applicant to work with DPW on traffic signalization and off-site safety impacts. So as to, so as to not pigeonhole too many, you know, specific options.
We can't tell people how to do, that's outside of our jurisdiction, but we could ask them to say, what are the off-site safety impacts? Got it.
And we can evaluate that as part of submitting the supplemental traffic information to you.
Got it.
We generally let the applicant make the final comment. Could you just reduce it to like about one, one minute?
It'll take two seconds.
Perfect.
Speed bumps have already been looked at for...
Speed bumps have already been looked at, and the years passed, and it was denied. There was also a stop sign looked at for the top of Thornhill and Sheep Hill, which was denied by the town a while ago, just so you know that.
We're asking them to take another look at it.
Okay, that's fine. Just telling you, it was already denied this Sunday.
Okay, I think... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. May I have one more question? Yeah? Mr. Hegney, it just seems to me that some sort of, I hope you can find information on intersections, number one. Number two, it just seems that, that reliability of that timing really triggers, in my mind, the success of the project, right? Is there nothing else you can do to test that from a traffic standpoint? It just, you know, a small test of some sort to verify?
That sounds like another traffic engineer's question. So I'm going to defer to Ms. Hegney.
And this is my last question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
The, the issue with that, and we kind of mentioned this at the last hearing, is that in order to facilitate proper access for any pedestrians using the intersection, we can't just go out there and change the timing. You know, we're required to put push buttons on all corners with the proper light. So testing it would effectively be doing it. You know, would be installing our proposed improvements.
And is that installation millions of dollars?
No, it's not millions of dollars. I mean, it's tens of thousands of dollars to put in new signal heads and new push buttons and make sure the grading on the sidewalk is correct and...
But you do understand that if that, if there's some other problem, it's going to make this project...
I mean, I think that's why we, why we look at other areas of the town. They're, they're doing it in other areas of the town. That's why we proposed. We, we looked at, I think, eight or nine different options for improvements, vetted them all with the DPW and the traffic consultant. And, and that's why we do these analyses, to, to really rely on the methodology and our assumptions to make clear decisions, make informed decisions, not just something that we think will work.
Well, having two engineering degrees, most stuff gets tested somewhere. So I'm hoping you find other data, quite frankly. Because that goes a long way in assuring, hey, this, this has a really high probability of being successful. And that's all I'll say. Thank you. Well, I think, but further, I mean, it's not just their statements and their opinions that is being vetted by Beta, who is our traffic consultant, as whether it's valid or invalid, or whether it's doable or not doable. It is further evaluated and, and debated within the Department of Public Works. And I, I think, I mean, if you've got three people, three traffic experts. I mean, this commission is not a traffic expert. And if we have three people working on it, and the consensus is thus, I don't, I, I have no basis on much to say it can't be thus. Because it's their study, but it's being vetted by two independent people. No, I understand.
With Mr. Maitland's comments in mind, we will look to see if there is other information that would provide some essentially testing data.
Sounds like there will be.
That, that we can, we can come up with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Then we need to close this. We are out of time, so this is closed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Just so the public knows, what has been closed is a preliminary. If it is moved forward, you will have another opportunity to evaluate what it is. If it is moved forward. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the change. Well, there is one more item on this project which you may want to stay for. This is to look at the zoning, the change in the zoning language.
The waiver of prohibition?
Yes, the, to add, if I can just step on Mr. Hegney's presentation. Within the regulations are certain incentives that are being granted to the, to this particular project, but any other project being built under the six one ten G portion of the regulations. Their proposal is to add a ninth to the eight that already exists. This next proposal that you'll hear is to add a ninth to those other eight. And that's the purpose of, I'm sorry if I stole your thunder, but...
That's quite all right, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for clarifying what the proposal is. And I also want to further clarify that our request for an additional half-story in this zone was withdrawn, and we have revised our plan so that that amendment to six one ten G has, has been withdrawn. As you said, this is a proposal to waive the prohibition that no entrance to or exit from a business use shall be located on any street frontage opposite a residence zone where the lot contains the business use has frontage on a business zone. And this is one of the properties that meets that criteria. And at the last hearing, we had presented to you a chart along with the zoning maps, the business zone maps, showing 58 properties in town, many of them on the Post Road, that either, that had both frontage on a... either, that had both frontage on a commercial street and frontage on a residential street or opposite a residential zone. And what we found in doing this analysis was that out of those 58, 35 already had an exit from the commercial property against a residential zone. Some of them are very significant, like the one at Greenwich Office Park off of West Putnam Avenue, and some are very, very minor. And we further went through the analysis of it to determine what properties out of the 23 that are left would either go ahead and perhaps deal, request this type of waiver. Six of the properties have significant topographic issues against the residential zone, three but Adams Gardens on Bertoff Road, and would not be able to access that, even though that's a residential zone. And two of the properties would not be able to access the residential zone because of the minimum required under Public Works from an intersection. So we came down to 11 properties total, and five of those are along Route 1. And the other part of what we presented to you regarding this was an analysis of those sections of the Plan of Conservation Development, and also the housing recommendations from the Housing Task Force, and we enumerated those for you in the supplemental material that we provided last Friday. When you have a regulation that is more honored in the breach, it does make you wonder whether there's any value of having this regulation at all, and when you look at the original language of it, it was adopted at a time when there was different types of commercial uses and mainly industry in the town, which no longer exists anymore. And I think that, given, excuse me, given the location of this property, and...
This place takes your breath away, doesn't it?
I've been eating them regularly. Thanks, Mr. Fox.
You've got a sick.
Believe it or not, I'm feeling better. Given the location of this property on Route 1, and given the fact that there is a light on Sheep Hill, and with the modifications that we're proposing to that signalization at that intersection, we believe that it is appropriate to grant this waiver, which would only be for properties that contain moderate-income housing developments.
Could you go through and, just for the record, enumerate the parts of the Housing Task Force that you think is relevant here, and also the conditions in the Plan of Conservation Development?
Yes, we identified three areas of the Plan of Conservation Development, items 3.4, 3.11, and 3.12. Terms of the housing recommendations for affordable and moderate-income housing, and it was action items 3.13 and 3.11 from the Housing Task Force that we believe are appropriate for this project and for this change in the regulations.
Could you just tell us what 3.11 and 3.13 from the Housing Task Force says?
I did not bring that information with me, Mr. Chairman. I can certainly provide it if the commission thinks it's necessary.
It's much faster on the internet than I am.
Yes. He can read it.
Yeah, there's a...
Just better eyes. Affordable Housing, Housing Task Force considered all the action items assigned in the Plan of Conservation Development, "In the context of a number of interrelated Greenwich affordable housing objectives, provide attractive, affordable housing options to meet the town's elderly, moderate-income workforce and other residents challenged to find affordable Greenwich housing. Develop an affordable housing program based on Greenwich's unique housing market and area median income characteristics. Preserve Greenwich's unique neighborhoods and villages and residential and open space character. Encourage residential uses in commercial areas to reduce stress on Greenwich's infrastructure and town resources. Manage the affordable housing inventory to achieve and maintain an attractive and safe living environment, and provide continuing flexible, affordable housing funding from private and public sources, not necessarily municipal funding." So here, this would be all privately funded, and this is an area that is served by public transportation. It has a myriad of all services within walking distance of this site, which is something that, in the overall plan of residential development, is something that across the country is encouraged. This is really the appropriate location for the type of project that you approved the regulation for in 2015.
Any comments from the commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments from the public on this?
Greg McGough on 29 Spazano Drive. Now, you correct me if I understood it incorrectly, because it's hard to understand all of this, but what I understand is they're looking for a waiver, and to show that they deserve the waiver, they studied 50-some similar intersections, right?
Yes.
So I guess the question I would ask is, how many of them were bus stops, right? And how many of them had a pedestrian crosswalk, and how many of them had a gas station? Because I don't know if that was taken into consideration, I didn't hear that question asked, but that would be one thing that would maybe make it not similar to those 50-some intersections.
Good point. Just as a quick clarification, it's actually a text amendment that they're proposing to add this waiver option into the incentive portion of the moderate-income housing regulation. So this isn't going to be something that is available townwide unless you are applying under Section 6110 for the moderate income. So in order to invoke this option for a waiver, you have to have a housing component that includes moderate income, so just to clarify that point.
Joan Knutson, 1 Spazano Drive. I believe that Mr. Hagney is asking for this waiver to suit his own needs on the property, and he's using the moderate-income housing to get what he wants, and it's not fair to us as neighbors. And I'm sorry, I'm just repeating myself over and over again, but I would like you to deny it.
Anyone else?
Carolyn Coyote Gorman, 17 Sheep Hill Road. I think I have three points to just bring back to the table. I think if we consider the context in which this waiver is being proposed, it's being proposed as incentive number nine. There are already eight incentives to achieve the town's goal, to provide moderate-income dwelling units. Is this an appropriate number nine? Another point that goes along with that is, this would be available to all future similar projects. Shouldn't other people affected by those future similar projects get an opportunity to speak to this type of waiver? I don't know that this is the time to make a blanket one available. And to the language of the original provision itself, it's very express. I think the town took into consideration balancing the burden that would be placed on residents compared to, you know, the benefit that would be given to business and industrial use. Why should the residents bear all of the burden in this case? I don't think we should, for all of the reasons that we discussed with regards to issue number nine that we've already discussed tonight. So, yeah, specifically with this request for a waiver, I think should be denied. I think there's ample reason to not provide a blanket waiver at this point. Thank you.
Any other public comment? You want to close this?
Well, do you want to talk about it? You had some thoughts on this yesterday regarding...
Well, we can, we can close it and then discuss it.
And then talk about it, okay. Because you wanted to maybe change how it was, should that be done before we close it?
Well... At the briefing yesterday, we discussed perhaps tightening the language a little bit on it. Were you able to talk to John Wetmore about it?
I wasn't able to, but I do feel confident in...
That we could do it.
That we can go stricter.
Okay.
More restrictive.
That's what I mean.
You couldn't make it, you know, you couldn't take it out of 6110 as an example, and say, you know...
Just procedurally, do you believe we should discuss that now while the matter's still open?
Absolutely.
Okay. What we discussed in the briefing yesterday was to tighten the language on this...
Further restrict.
Further restrict. That's better, thank you. Further restrict your amendment by adding at the end of the frontage in a business zone, adding the language that is along the post road.
Well, knowing that that's the kind of colloquial word for, I think, East and West Putnam Avenue would be...
Or Route 1.
Thank you. Well, these are my notes that I wrote quick, so there's better language.
I think it's clearer, Route 1.
You could either say East and West Putnam Avenue or Route 1, since there are other, this old post road, number three and four and...
And I say that because I know that in the POCD, the whole east to west of the Putnam Avenue, if you will, was discussed as being these areas for opportunities for the housing, and I think that was a part of the Housing Task Force conclusion also, because it does have the bus routes, it is close to train, blah, 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 for all the other reasons. So this would further restrict it from being applied in other areas in town.
And I think the commission has the authority under Connecticut law to be able to further restrict a proposed regulation. You cannot expand it. The point being that there has to be public notice, it has to be published in the paper, and the public knows that something is going to be made more expansive.
Right.
They haven't had adequate notice. It's really more of a notice issue than authority, because you could...
No, I understand.
You're the Planning and Zoning Commission, you make the regulations. But it's really a notice, if you make it more restrictive...
More restrictive.
...then the notice requirement has been met.
Okay. Okay. That was the, that was the, well, you were there, so Andy, that's what we had discussed at the meeting, to tighten, to restrict this. Is there any comment on that from the public?
I don't think they understood what you did.
Andy's not, Andy's not clear that people understand how we're restricting it.
I don't think they understood why, what the post road language meant to this text amendment.
There are, as the applicant has stated, 58 properties in the town of Greenwich that are affected by 6137.
Okay.
Of those, 35 are currently built violating that provision. They exist in the town today. Is that, am I saying it correctly?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. At least 23 properties that would be potentially affected by this. Of those, going through my notes, there was a series of discounting so that we ended up with, of the 23, six properties had topographic problems and so forth, so wouldn't be able to use, that would not be applicable to this 6137. Two of them are off of Adams Gardens, which would require the town housing authority approval. Two of the properties wouldn't comply because you can't have two intersections. Department of Public Works in the town of Greenwich make you have a certain separation between your intersections.
Okay.
So that left us with 11 properties that could...
Be affected by this.
Be affected, and only five of which are along the post road. And the purpose of my adding that in on the post road is because the post road was defined in both the POCD and in the Housing Task Force studies as being the place where we should look to encourage this kind of housing, the moderate-income housing.
So another way of putting it is that 6110, the section that deals with moderate-income housing, applies to most of the business zones throughout town, so Glenville, Cosco, Old Greenwich, the villages, et cetera. And so what the applicant's asking to do is to allow an additional incentive to have the waiver from 6137 in the moderate-income housing. And what the commission is suggesting is, instead of it applying to all of the business zones, that it only applied to the East and West Putnam corridor. So in other words, what's been noticed so far is that it would apply to all of the business zones where you could, where you could put moderate income, and the commission's saying that's too broad, narrow it down to just East and West Putnam Avenue.
And by narrowing it down, it's only the five properties.
Yes. And the reason for that is that the post road, again, I'm repeating what I said earlier, but it was identified as the area, both in the Selectance Housing Task Force, which studied this whole issue for a year before they came up with the recommendations, and within the POCD also pointed out that the post road was the place to encourage this type of development. Okay, that's what we...
We understand it, we don't like it, but we understand it.
Thank you.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, hold on.
I'm just curious, can you also add in there that the exit coming off of that industrial area, or whatever you want to call a shopping area, not be directly across from a cross street? And what made me think about this was, present exit to this on Sheep's Head, people are worried that they're going to come right across, go out Apache. If they can't do anything with the zoning on Apache, you got to cut them off from cutting through Apache. And the way you can do that is not allow that exit to be across from a cross street.
Most traffic engineers would tell you that's the ideal situation, because then you don't, if you offset your, if you offset access points to a road, it's much more confusing to traffic than if you have them right offsetting.
I know, but in this case, you're protecting the residential area a little bit better.
It's also less safe for the pedestrians.
Right.
Because now they're navigating two sets of turning areas, and it's...
All right, just a thought.
I understand what you're trying to do. It has a countereffect for the safety of the pedestrians.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's see, no other comment? Do you want to close this? Is that a yes by everybody? Okay, this is closed.
Okay, so...
So...
That is the, that is the end of the public hearing. Thank you.
Do you have any to close on?
Yeah, we do, boss.
I'm sick, I'm going home.
You know what? I'm going to get, figure out how to call your wife and tell her that you're making us all freeze in here. Look at all these people having their coats on.
Everybody has their coat on. You've got your coat on, you're like, I...
I just don't want you to...
Listen, I was going to say, if you're really sick, could you go, could you go sit in the audience while we vote? Take that microphone with you and sit in the audience.
Yeah, please go and sit in the other room.
Okay.
Why is it so, why is it 6110?
Because Andy got hot, because we think he has a fever or something. He's hot, and now the rest of us are freezing. I've been complaining.
We have four things...
Yes, sir.
Let's go quick and try to get Andy out of it. We have four things to decide tonight. Do you want to do them? And does anybody not want to do, let's, we've got Cat Rock, is everybody okay with that one? Okay, let's...
And we've got Locum Ares.
We got then Lacum Ares.
Yeah.
And then we've got the last two that we discussed on J and J. One is a conversion from preliminary to final, and the other would be adding on the text. So, you all up to it?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's start with the easiest ones first, probably. Let's go to Cat Rock.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, you're asking me for a motion, right?
Yes, I am asking for, well, does anyone, does, anybody want to discuss it? Then I'm asking for a motion.
I move for finding that this is neither a subdivision or a re-subdivision, and in so doing, we, I don't know quite how to word this, but that the conditions of all previous approvals that have, that apply to this shall be, in as much as they are relevant, shall be fulfilled, and...
Are still in effect.
And are still in effect, in as much as they remain relevant. And I don't think, the only other thing is that they need to show the owner of the open space, and I, and to submit, the open space declaration was submitted, I think it was an error on Cindy's part, that's it, just show the owner.
The open space what?
There is a declaration. Yeah, we just need the owner.
Yeah, on the map.
There is a declaration, and we need it on the map.
Because they are going to resubmit this map, so...
Yep, so they're resubmitting the map, and that is the only thing...
And Katie, you've got the new area that was involved with this?
Yeah, it was 1136.
1136 is being transferred from 82 to 80.
So, one thing I have to admit, I didn't quite understand, though, and 1074 is still being transferred the other way, right?
No, there's no transfer. This is just a transfer from one day to the other, there's no equal area.
So, the, so the little sliver thing is still there?
But that's all part of the transfer.
That's just a tiny little piece.
Yeah.
And so, the remainder is the 1136.
Well, that's not how Cindy...
Well, there's the triangle piece, and then there's the piece that goes around the property line.
No, hold on, that's not how Cindy, that's not how Cindy has it. There's a transfer of land between the properties. 82 Cat Rock relinquishes, and 80 Cat Rock gains, but they're different numbers.
Right, so in other words, if you add up the triangle and you add up the sliver, it's all going from 82 to 80, and you add up those two things, and...
They come up to the 1136.
And they come up to the 1136, got it.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I think...
And I just think, in case you needed any factual information, that there was the map that they submitted tonight, plus the letter that Bristol submitted on email earlier today. He just clarified what some of these things were.
Yeah, we're looking at the, at the December 2nd map.
Okay, last thing.
December 2nd? No, this was, yes.
And I did forget something else, which is that we need them to confirm the F A R for the modified lots. And it's the one lot that...
It's so small.
It's the one lot that was a concern, because it's got 500 feet. Mr. Hegney said it was fine, but just to confirm it.
Well...
He said, he said it was a, wasn't you? Oh, sorry, whoever it was.
See, I'm not sure that we...
Well, I was just going to say, how's that going to work? Because there's, there's no 90-day period, there's no, you know, so it's either...
Got it, okay, leave it be. Okay.
I mean, he did, he did represent on the record that it was constructed post 2006, so it's, you know, it's a new building where, where he knows the amount of area he has left over, which was the 600 square feet, so...
Right, so it's just that...
What happened to my folks?
Cindy, guys?
Excuse me.
Hey, guys?
Oh, we're making a resolution, folks.
You guys have got to be involved one way or the other, either take the microphone...
Yeah.
The F A R of the donor lot is what Cindy raised in her staff report.
Right.
What about it?
No, and that's what, that's what he presented the info.
Right, right.
Okay.
So, applicant shall verify, shall provide the figures, that's all we're asking. We're not conditioning the approval, we're just saying...
But he is going to submit a map.
I was just going to say, but you do want to have the map filed on the...
No, he agreed to do it.
Oh, yeah.
He'll have the name on there, on the owner of the open space.
All right.
Second? All in favor?
Sorry, boss. Okay, 6 Locum Ares.
We've got to move them along, the cat.
Okay.
They're getting nervous.
Wait, who seconded, I'm sorry?
Andy.
Andy.
From Mr. De...
Next one is Lacum Ares.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Uh-uh.
Motion?
Okay, so, move approval for final site plan and special permit to construct the pool house, has a special exception from 12/11/13. The applicant shall...
Special exception?
Yes.
But the building is greater than 1200 square feet?
That's not a special exception. Special permit?
No, Z B A.
No?
Yes, they have Z B A from 12/11/13. I'm just reading from the notes, I'm not even...
It's an RA2 zone, so the, that doesn't make sense for a special exception for the accessory.
Okay, well, a special exception for an indoor athletic use in excess of...
Oh, that's in the main house.
Okay.
That's not, that doesn't have to do with the pool house.
Just the pool house. We can, they shall meet all the points raised by the Z E O, the great plane, the window wells, the bar, and we don't worry about the elevator, because we're not doing that.
No.
We note that health and, state health are okay, D P W is okay.
Yep.
And that's it.
I W W A, did you say that?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I W W A approved it in June of '16.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
And now the...
I got to do another one of these, guys. I'm in love with these things.
Does it make any difference, Katie, whether we do the last one first, or just go in the order they're listed?
It's better to go in the order listed.
But you could take it out of order if you wanted to.
Well, if you say it's better to go in the order listed, that's fine, because the first one is just a prelim...
It's just a preliminary, right.
Preliminary moving to final.
Okay, but...
One's not, one, one's not dependent on the other, because the site plan's a preliminary. If it was a final, it would make a difference.
If it was a final, it would be a little different.
But it doesn't, because it's a preliminary.
Okay, so we'll go in the order.
Okay.
All right, we're back on the site plan, then.
Okay, so I hereby move a...
Well, just, let's, let's, does anybody want to say anything?
I mean, it's, from that standpoint, if you're not going to move forward with the text amendment, that obviously is going to change the site plan, but you could note that.
Well, I think if this, if we've gone out in the water this far, why don't we just finish this? I mean, if we don't approve the second one, then...
I mean, obviously, it's a preliminary, so the, so the site plan would have to adjust if the text amendment doesn't move forward.
Right.
I mean, that's just the given, so...
Right. It is a preliminary.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody want to talk about it, or do you want to go right to a motion? All right. There you go. It's up to you.
Okay, I hereby move the, that we go, that we take this preliminary to final, and there would be two things that we are requiring that be done. The applicant must, is to go to A R C and receive A R C review and comments, and in addition, the applicant is to work with the Department of Public Works on the advanced phasing for the southbound approach with either exclusive or concurrent pedestrian phasing, depending on what is viewed as most efficient. And in addition, the applicant shall work with D P W to evaluate off-site safety impacts of this proposal. I guess D P W and any other relevant...
Right. On the first part, would it be, would it be, are you saying that you want them to do that specifically, or are you saying that you want them to look at just the traffic signalization?
No, we're looking at traffic signalization, but that we are looking specifically at either the phasing for the southbound approach, as well as with either exclusive or concurrent pedestrian phasing, which is what...
Right, but there may be other options in there, is what I'm saying.
Well, there's other options, okay.
So, if you just leave it as, if, for the applicant to work...
Why can't we let the traffic expert work it out?
Yeah, for the applicant to work with D P W and Beta to work on the traffic signalization.
Well, I looked at the quote, this is what Beta is saying.
Right.
So, you're saying there's other, there may be something else that will emerge in the discussions beyond what Beta has said to date.
Correct.
Perfect, okay.
Correct, yeah, and I think D P W would prefer that it, that it be kept broader.
Right. Yeah, I think we do want to keep it.
However, having said that, then, then you're adding that you want them to look at more the off-site safety impacts.
Off-site safety impacts, so as far as I know, we've got two things. They need the A R C review, and they need to do this work with D P W. Does anyone else have any other, anything else they want done? I mean, other relevant staff department, staff comments, but I think we've got everything in place, except for those two things.
I didn't bring this up when he was, when this, I know. I'm talking to you and two at the same time, which is not nice, so...
That's okay.
Anyway...
We'll let you this once.
In, when they showed the drawing with the extra lane in Sheep Hill, they were changing the radius on the southeast corner of this site. It could all be done on their property, and I would like to have them look at whether changing that radius on the southeast corner of the site is beneficial. It seemed like when the truck is making that right-hand turn, that movement would be made easier if that radius was larger.
I think an easier way to put it is, D P W slash Beta should be looking at exits, entrances, and validating...
Well, I'd like them to have them study this corner, too.
And the corner, and validate the radiuses, and as particularly, you know, should the rear exit on Sheep Hill be left-hand turn only?
Well, one of the...
For trucks.
What you could do is, is just...
No, because I think they're planning on taking it, well...
Validating...
If you just leave it as address D P W and Beta comments, because they, they asked for, they wanted the whole analysis of why, why they couldn't do, beyond what they've submitted. I think they wanted to see what would happen if you widened, what would that do to the numbers.
Okay.
So, I think they're not totally satisfied on that point yet, until they can see the diagrams to support their argument.
What would the widening to this mean? Of a private property, that would have to be required, and there's utility trenches and everything.
D P W is asked to, they say, we hear you, show us on, show us on paper, that what you're saying is correct.
Well, the drawing is shown.
Right, but they haven't reviewed that yet.
Oh, okay.
So, this, right, because that, that came in too late, so...
All right, well, the, the traffic just needs to come back to us.
Right.
With both Beta and D P W saying, great.
Right. And I...
Can you put that into...
Yes.
And I'm not sure it's, it's written that strongly in D P W's comments, I don't, I don't quite recall, to be honest, but I think who's paying for what between the applicant and D P W should be sorted out.
They've agreed to pay for the, the work.
Right.
They've agreed to pay for the signaling, oh, God.
It's the signaling, the sidewalk, and the bus shelter.
Yeah.
Is what I understood they're going to, to be paying for. But I mentioned this, though, because however it's going to work, if there's bonding needed, et cetera, that, that should really be worked out in final.
The other thing, the other thing that we got them to agree to do at the end of the last meeting, is they agreed to, if this gets approved, they will start work on that immediately, so that the neighborhood could benefit from those changes. As they go through the, getting the building permits, construction of this, that they would finish that up as an early phase of the project.
Right.
All the signalization, all the new heads and everything.
And so, you've won a detailed phasing plan, it sounds like, to note that and also deal with the bus station issue, right?
Good point. The other thing is that D P W does have outstanding comments that need to be addressed, and I forgot to say that.
Yeah, but we're saying everything.
And the drainage.
Other, well, I, no, I think, well, whatever.
No, there's, it's to, they still have stuff.
Prior to final.
But it's prior to final.
Yeah, prior to final.
Yeah.
Right, so between now and final, they have to address those outstanding comments.
So, it's a little tricky, because if, I mean, they kind of have to work things out with D P W before they work things out with A R C.
Well, not really.
Because of the side pitch program.
No, not really, because the key concern, I think that people have been raising in discussion, that we wanted to see for, that people wanted to see from A R C, and somebody yell at me if I'm misquoting you guys, was what it looks like. And is, how does A R C feel about the presence on the post road? If there are other changes, I didn't hear a lot about that yesterday, maybe I missed something, I don't know what that means.
Well, the traffic and so forth, well...
Yeah, I mean, like Nick didn't...
The driveway locations are pretty much the same, they are.
I think they're...
Nick was concerned about the fronting of the post road, how that worked on the post road. Okay, so D P W...
And one last minor thing.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
We talked about them earlier, but I think in the parking garage, since this is a shared parking, because of that component of being with the commercial use, that there has to be one assigned parking space for each dwelling unit, signed and reserved.
Well, and the retail comment.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah, no.
No high intensity, good one.
What's, what's the language for that, Katie? High turnover?
High turnover business.
Yeah, high traffic generators.
High turnover uses in the commercial, no high turnover uses.
Okay, in the retail.
Okay, I'm glad you remember that.
Do you want them to provide a photometric plan, presumably, that A R C?
That's A R C's behavior.
Yeah.
I mean, I specifically, the rear parking lot that faces the neighborhood.
Right, when they have specific things that they have to do for the commercial...
No, but they, the photometric, they've got to do that for the lighting anyway, don't they?
Yeah, they do.
But I'm saying specifically adjacent to the neighborhood.
That, those lights are down so low compared to that neighbor to the north, you know, it's down about 20 feet.
No, I hear you.
The notes that we used last time said, uses located on the first and second floors should be limited to moderate volume traffic establishments. No high-volume traffic establishments shall be allowed, examples Starbucks, Dunkin' Donuts, et cetera. I don't know if I put that in, but, and then also, medical office use on the second floor requires review by Planning and Zoning Commission.
Perfect. Yes, how we felt about East Putnam earlier.
Do you, did you want to make any comments about the, the refuse area?
Nope. I mean, listen, they're the ones that put it in the middle of their parking lot. They say it's the right place, it seems crazy to me, but...
But they've defended it.
I don't, the slope, they...
Okay, so no medical use without our review. Okay.
No fish stores.
And no fish stores.
For sure.
No fish stores.
No P O R.
No fish stores.
Branches.
Okay.
That was a joke.
I think we're ready for a second.
When we were talking dumpsters, I had to agree.
Just second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Because we're all gonna-
This is a move to final.
Move to final.
But also, just for the record-
They did withdraw the special permit, so that's already been done.
I just did the site plan.
Yeah, no, you, you had said move to, yeah.
I'm, I'm learning, a little slow sometimes. And I may not always believe the lawyers, but, you know, what can you do? Okay.
Okay, so we moved to final.
And did we say aye?
Oh, all in favor? I think I did.
I don't remember saying it, okay, I, you know. It's only 10, 10:51, I mean, what's wrong with us?
It's only been us eight hours.
Okay.
No, it's not, our record is 8 o'clock.
Record, no, sometime we got, once we got out of here, I think at 8:30 or something, everybody went home.
I wanna plead for that.
That was during the session.
Okay. Number 10, this is the text amendment, they have withdrawn part of the text amendment, so all we're dealing with on this is the adding of a subsection 9 to section 6110G, which deals with incentives that the Planning and Zoning Commission can approve or provide to a developer to encourage them to do this sort of a project. The text in bold, or the text which was published, the question is, do you wanna add in that language about applying only to the post road?
Well, let's start, do we wanna approve the concept first? I mean, they've already gotten FAR incentive.
Yes. Yes.
They've gotten height incentives.
Yes.
And we've gotten four units.
Yes.
I think to get more incentives, they need to give up more units.
Well-
Because I, I just think, especially with the, this site is unique, where the, it protrudes into the neighborhood, and it's on a relatively narrow road. I, I think that, you know, they've gotten some pretty generous incentives for four units.
But on the other hand, this isn't really about them, it's about text amendment that applies.
Yes, but they're-
You have to think at it that way.
But anyone would have gotten those incentives.
Yeah, but I'm saying is it's another benefit.
Anyone on the ticket would have gotten those things that have the incentives.
Well, I think the question is-
But I'm just saying, but-
But, but the question, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm saying is, they have already gotten the benefit, right?
Well, I mean, you could, you could say that about every incentive under-
6110, that, that, you know, that the first one, you know, that you keep adding, you want more. I mean, it's not set up that way, it's set up that here are eight incentives that the commission can decide on a site-by-site basis which ones they believe are worthy of granting or not worthy of granting. So this would just be a ninth option. In other words-
It's not like it's a negotiation.
Well, no, it is. It's, it's, it's a, it's a balancing act where you're, you're looking at a particular site, and you're looking at what they're providing to the, you know, under the moderate income regulation, and whether or not this, the site is worthy of you granting the, the incentives that they may be asking for.
Because the, the real thing is this. The site, bear with me a minute, the site still, under one, under no incentives whatsoever, would still create 30-some-odd or four, what is it, 35,000 square feet of space.
Something, yeah.
That's what it's legally entitled to do.
Yes.
The question is, we give these incentives because we want the housing, I mean, it's a deterrent.
I understand, I got that.
Yeah, so if we give eight incentives, or nine incentives, or seven or, or eight, I mean, I think if the incentive makes sense, or if it's, it assists in these projects, we have tried forever in this town to get moderate-income housing. And over the years, 6110G produced, I think, 20 units or something like that, over years.
20. Since 1986 or something, yeah.
And that was the reason we changed it back two years ago, or a year and a half ago, whatever, to further incentivize this use to see if we can create more of these units. So it's, and this is the first one that comes down the pike from, from that change. So my feeling, I, I would be in favor of this, adding it as an incentive, because I think we've tried and tried and tried. And if this affects five properties, they could take a benefit from it. And maybe only one ever will, I don't know. But the fact is, I think if, if it's, if it can be demonstrated that this would incentivize it, I'm in favor of it. Looking at this specific project, and the reason I asked the questions early on, what if this thing was never merged? You still got an LB property up there that could go for the whole ball of wax on the same thing. 110G housing, .9FA, I mean, that thing could be split up there, and all of the traffic from that would come out on, on Sheep Hill. So I don't think that, I mean, if they did it that way, the, the traffic's there, and there's nothing you can do about it. Doing it this way with the merge lot, at least a certain percentage of it, and I don't know what percentage of, the whole traffic on the site will in fact go to East Putt. But I don't see this one incentive as being detrimental either to the POCD or to, to the neighborhood. Because again, if this weren't split, that traffic is still coming out on Sheep, only could come out on Sheep Hill. So I don't think it's detrimental in that way to this neighborhood.
Richard, if, I agree with you. If you denied it, wouldn't it have a serious, serious impact on the going to final, on the final plan, right? Wouldn't it, would it make the-
They didn't have to get a variance.
Oh, they, they, what? Well, they could try, they tried the variance before, they could always go back and try again. It's in theory a different project, and a different time and everything. I don't know, I don't know what it would mean. If we deny this, I guess they're gonna have to figure out what they're gonna do.
Right.
So I, I think, but this thing on its face, they did have two, I mean, not that we're, I mean, they had two things that we asked them to change one of them, they did.
Yep.
They got rid of the half-story, they brought it into the, to the regulation. I think this is, um, I think this is an incentive that, that would help in this, that clearly. And I think it would also potentially help in four other sites or five other sites in town, perhaps. But that's it, that's the total effect of this. It's not town-wide or anything else. And I think it's a limited, but it's potentially useful.
I mean, the added advantage is that when you're under the moderate income, obviously, you have to have a residential component to the commercial use.
Right.
And since it's on the post road, it's, it's, you know it's going to be predominantly, presumably a commercial use anyway. So now you're getting a residential component to it. So what you get out of the way it's been set up is you get the option of looking at, okay, well, what's the overall impact of this? Do we want to allow this incentive or not? I mean, as, as properties come in and ask to develop on this, I guess, the five, that's what you get to look at on a case-by-case, you don't have to, you don't have to allow for it, it's just an option.
Right. So even if we approved it, I mean, technically, we wouldn't have to grant it on this project.
Yeah.
If we didn't want to.
Right.
I mean, maybe that's the time to negotiate.
Andy, Andy, I didn't-
Maybe that's the time to negotiate the extra unit, but, I mean, this is just, this would just be a text amendment. And when they come in with final, maybe that's the, it's, we don't have to grant it, but it's just there in case we don't want to.
I didn't feel like they had already asked for, like, eight incentives, because the eight incentives are already in the reg. And so it's not like they were coming in without coming in under this 110G and saying, can we have this, 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 and this? They're just saying, can we have what's already in 110G?
Well, they, they're developing-
And those we could say no to. If we wanted to, we could say no to any of the ones that they've asked for, but again, I-
No, we, I think that, I agree that POCD is trying to get us to develop more units. I, I think that the text amendment is another tool in the toolbox. I think this is a very unique site, and with its unique traffic issues that, you know, I think everybody is concerned about.
I know.
But I think you're, the point that it's just a text amendment, not a final site plan, I can go along with it. And your first question was, I think it should be limited to the post road.
Okay. If everybody-
And I would just, just note that the old 6110 was all about how much land you had, and that, it was a mathematical equation to figure out how many units you could have, so that's been eliminated from the existing reg. And the reason that the incentives are set up the way they are is to, is to allow for the flexibility, so, and, and effectively, it comes down to how much parking you can fit onto the property. And once you've figured out the parking, then you can back into it from there. So you could have a bunch of studios, or, you know, less, three families, whatever it is. So it's, all of this has been designed under this regulation to provide that flexibility, understanding that there's so much diversity within the business zone. So I think this is just, that falls into that category.
Okay. But, um, I'm, 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 let's see, I don't know what I wanna say this.
Why don't we make a motion and not get in trouble?
You don't know if you wanna say it?
Okay, let's do that, then I'll, let's do that, then I won't get into trouble, thank you very much. Okay, let's, um-
I, I know where it is going, and I just, I don't think-
Save me from myself.
Okay.
So can you say the language again if you have your last one?
Okay, you, you, all right.
You do it, just you do the motion, 'cause it's your language that amends it. And just be clear, just be clear, if the business use has to front on the post road? Only fronting on the post road?
The, the, just bear, okay, the text reads, "A waiver of the prohibition that no entrance to or exit from a business use shall be located on any street frontage opposite a residential zone where the lot containing business use has frontage on the business zone along the post road."
Along East and West Putnam Avenue.
Thank you, along East and West Putnam Avenue, so that-
No, Route 1.
Well, I'm gonna let them say which one's better.
But don't you wanna say, "A waiver of the pro-" may be granted?
Yeah, maybe.
That's, all waivers are maybe.
Okay, okay.
Is I, isn't that the correct language of 6110G?
Oh, wait, Patrick's making the face. Okay, so a waiver may be granted.
It says maybe.
Oh, what, do we have to add "maybe" granted?
All, I thought all incentives-
Well, under 110, it says-
Shit. Where are your brakes? Thank you.
It says to, to provide incentives or, et cetera.
It says the, it says the commission makes a, let's see, "The following modifications to the Building Zone Regulations provided, one, the proposed development includes the requisite number of moderate-income units."
It says the commission-
Two, "The commission makes a finding that the purpose is a requirement," let's see.
The one I wrote about, Richard, it says, "The Planning and Zoning Commission may allow the following modifications to the regulations."
Thank you, that's what I was after.
So this says-
Right, provided that, one, two, right. We may provide that, and we could do an increase of 4, but no increase to the, to the lot coverage. We could do the lot coverage with no increase, and these are things we may grant.
Okay, and then, so it's, did I then read the language again on the business use, fronting on Route 1, or?
Well, I think staff wants East and West Putnam Avenue, so.
I should also note, just for the record, just to be nitpicky, but you said on a business zone, um, it's-
In a business zone, right.
Well, I was trying to read from the text in our, in our amendment.
Right, so, um, so a waiver of the prohibition that no entrance to or exit from a business use shall be located on any street frontage opposite a residence zone where the lot containing the business use has frontage in a business zone along East or West Putnam Avenue?
Correct.
Yeah, but I just wanted to be real clear that it's facing Putnam Avenue.
It has to have frontage.
It has to have frontage on Putnam Avenue.
In a business zone, it says.
Itself has to face Putnam.
No, 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 what are you talking about?
No, it says, "The business use has frontage in a business zone," it says.
That's it.
No, it's a lot with the business use has frontage, it's a lot that has the frontage.
No, no, I don't want the lot to have frontage, I'm saying-
It says, "Where the lot containing the business use has the frontage."
And what I'm asking you guys is, 'cause can we make all the commercial uses face the post road?
Well, you could definitely do that under special permit, when, when this comes into being.
Okay, do you see what I'm saying? I wanted the use itself to not face the residential area.